We open tonight's school committee meeting for February the 7th, 2019. We have a little business to conduct first before we get to the topic of the evening that everybody is here to talk about. So first things first, we need to approve our minutes from January the 24th, 2019. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the January 24th meeting.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none? All in favor? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Chairman's report. I have an apology from Bethel Houlihan, who is a member of our board. She had a previously scheduled event tonight, so unfortunately she's out of town and she's unable to join us. But she did want me to make everybody in the audience aware that she truly wishes she was here to be a part of this conversation tonight. I also want to thank people for coming out. The turnout tonight is truly indicative of how much we care about our facilities here in Maynard, and more importantly, our teachers, our students, our staff, and everyone who occupies the Green Meadow Elementary School. We've heard from many members of the community. I've seen even more discussion online. There's been a lot of dialogue about this. The purpose of tonight's session, the only, the reason that there is only one agenda item, is to get information out there, hear your concerns, and answer your questions as thoroughly and completely as possible. That being said, I'd like to take the opportunity to publicly thank the members of the Green Meadow community that are in the audience. The teachers, the staff, the parents and the students have been remarkable in the last two weeks, since the most recent concerns came to our attention. To the parents of the pre-K program, please understand that we're working to reopen that classroom as soon as possible. I personally wasn't happy with the need to close for the week, but due to the overwhelming concern of our teachers and our parents, we did so. We needed to reassure our teachers, parents, and the community that the furniture that we might move, the materials that we might want to use, needed, that we use to educate our smallest and our most vulnerable students are safe before they could be moved. And I'm pleased to report that we've taken those steps. You're going to hear more about those results very shortly. I want to thank our teachers again. You've handled the disruptions to your teaching schedule with grace, good humor, and creativity. Our staff, you've worked tirelessly to plan, to relocate your materials, and adjust in the moment. The changes have been happening fast and furious, and you've been responding to those, and you have my deepest gratitude for that. Thank you. As a result, our students are continuing to engage in unique and varied learning opportunities, and that's what we want for our students at Maynard. And finally, to the Maynard community, those of you who participated in the outpouring of support for our teachers through cards, through the breakfast that was provided, the treats that have been showing up, our teachers have deserved this support, and I really appreciate the community's support for our teachers and staff throughout this process. Shifting gears slightly, there's been other things that have been going on in Maynard this week. I'd like to call attention to an event that occurred on Tuesday evening. Don Capello and I attended the Board of Selectmen's meeting to discuss our recent endorsement of the Fund Our Future campaign. This is an effort led by the Massachusetts Teachers Association to push forward legislation to fix the formulas that are used to calculate our school funding for Massachusetts cities and towns. I'm pleased to report that the selectmen spoke favorably of our efforts, and they're considering supporting it as a select board. The Fund Our Future campaign has been a recent, recent topic of conversation at two of our school committee meetings, and we've been lucky enough to have Senator Jamie Eldridge and Representative Kate Hogan in attendance for those. They've heard our need, and they're willing to do the work with us to get the, the funding that we need and the funding that our students deserve. And for those of you who are interested in activism, you can find more information about that campaign online. There's information about advocacy efforts, there's information about community events. It's, it's a really worthwhile campaign. And finally, for those of you who are interested, this Saturday morning in the Roosevelt Room at the library is our annual town budget meeting. All departments do budget presentations, there's an overview of town finances in general, and if you'd like to learn more about the process, you are welcome to attend. One of the groups that will be in attendance on Saturday is our select board and our town administrator. I'd like to thank the four members of the select board that are here tonight to listen in on the conversation, be a part of the process. Our town administrator is also here this evening. I'd like to thank him for giving up an evening with his family to come out and be a part of this process as well. And finally, we're going to hear from Representative Kate Hogan in a few minutes. Kate is here as well, and she's going to have an opportunity to address the crowd in a few minutes. So that being said, that is my, my chairman's report for the evening. I'd like to pass the responsibilities over to Dr. Girardi for his superintendent's report.
Thank you, Justin. I too would like to thank Representative Hogan for coming and all of her support over the years and also tonight. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator, our colleagues on the town side who are up here and who will help us answer some questions, the Maynard Police Department who are here as well, the Green Meadow staff and parents who are here. We're very happy you're here so we can get the information out. It's been, it's been hard, and we do care. But tonight we have some, a couple of special things I want to celebrate because we have some special students in our house and special parents. So back in December, the Fowler School held its first-ever National Geographic Bee. All students participated in the classroom level in the GOB, and the 10 top finishers from grades 6, 7, and 8 made it to the finals. 8th grader Quentin Mylin was the winner, and after the Bee, he participated in an online GOB, and he, we are all anxiously awaiting the results to see if he will qualify for the state tournament. So Quentin is here with his mother and father, Tim and Joy. Would you mind standing up, Quentin? Tim and Joy? In late January, the Fowler School held a spelling bee for all students, and eight made it to the finals. In addition, the Fowler invited, the Fowler School leadership invited the Amago School to participate, and two Amago students joined the eighth Fowler finalists, so we'd have 10 finalists. 8th grader James Carvin won the spelling bee, and the championship word was dissertation. On, on March 1st, James will also take an online assessment to see if he qualifies for the state tournament. Something that's very special is that by winning the spelling bee, James won the Bob Brooks Trophy, named in honor of longtime Fowler Principal, Mr. Robert Brooks. The trophy will bear his name in years to come to recognize his service and commitment to the Maynard students. And I see that James brought it, so when he gets up, he'll be able to show you what a wonderful trophy that is. James is here with his parents, Kristin and Greg, so I'd like to congratulate them as well. We'd, he and I would like to recognize one of Fowler's super spellers. All students participated at the classroom-level spelling bee, and the 5th grade spelling bee champion is our very own Anna Hemm. So I'd like to congratulate Anna, her parents Amanda, and school committee chair Justin. Come on, Anna.
Excellent. Wow, that was a pleasant surprise. Okay, moving on, we have our student representatives here who are, who are members of WAVM. So Pat and AJ, could you guys come up and give us your student report for the week?
So I will say, we're coming up on February break, so there's not a whole lot going on as of now. In terms of National Honor Society, we have finally planned out our town-wide clean event. We're helping the high school, Fowler, the police station, fire station, with certain needs that they have, and it's gonna occur sometime around late March, early April. So we're looking forward to that.
As I talked about last meeting, with vocal and instrumental all-state auditions, we had three people get in, Lucas Peppin, Charlie Newhauser, and Hazel and Arroyan, two of which were vocalists and a bassoon player, so they'll be heading off to Boston by the end of, end of February, sleeping over in Boston Hotel and performing at the Boston Opera House.
This past Friday was the annual Pops Night, and it was my second one, but it was actually really fun to help out with and watch as an event. Huge range of singers, all ages. It was really an entertaining night. And I believe that pretty much wraps it up on our end.
Yes. Any questions for us?
Thank you very much. That's great.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on in the agenda, the event that everyone's here for, we're moving on to the Green Meadow update. At this point in time, the first part of the update is going to be for us to do our work. We are going to hear reports from Mr. Aaron McClosco, who is our Director of DPW and Facilities, and also from George Barrows, who is the Director of Operations for Universal Environmental Consultants. First though, I would like to introduce Representative Kate Hogan, who's in the back of the room. And Kate, do you have any words for us? I was told that you might.
Good evening, Maynard. I am really glad to be here tonight. Thank you to the school committee for the invitation to attend, and I just want to let everyone know that I am going to stay very interested in the issues at Green Meadow, and I will be doing anything I can in my power, both through the state and my interest in the education of our students, to ensure that we're able to take the steps necessary, that we have a plan, that we communicate that plan concisely and in real time, and that everyone here is going to leave the meeting tonight knowing that we're moving forward. We're moving forward as a school, we're moving forward as Green Meadow, and we're moving forward as a town. And I promise to invest not only in this, but also in looking at how and when we move forward with the school, a new school, and how we're going to be able to do that. So this I promise you, I have staff here if anyone wants to talk further, and I do thank you all for your emails and calls. I was brought up to speed and I think record time by all of your ability to articulate clearly what the issue was and what and how you wanted to move forward. So thank you. I will be here through these discussions. I'm in the back of the room, my staff's in the back of the room. I think you know Courtney, I think you know Karen, and we will be here for you. We have your back, and best of luck as we move forward this evening. Thank you all so much.
At this time, I'm going to pass the microphone over to Dr. Girardi for a brief update. The purpose of this agenda item is to hear your community concerns. We want to share any information that we have at our disposal. Information has been coming in almost on the hour for the last two weeks. So we are going to give you the most recent information that we have. We are going to try to answer any questions that we can, and if there's ever a situation where we can't answer a question, we will do our best to get you that answer. So at this time, I would like to give Dr. Girardi the opportunity to give us a brief update in regards to the concerns about the Green Meadow Elementary School.
Okay. So I know there are a lot of upset people here, and I know we all really sincerely want to hear their concerns. I also want to say though that we are all concerned about the children's safety and the staff's safety. First and foremost, health and safety is of the Maynard Public Schools, students and staff are the utmost priority of the school community administration. There's been ongoing concerns about air quality at the Green Meadow School. The DPH was brought in as soon as a staff member mentioned concerns about air quality early in September, I think it was, related to mold, and the DPH wrote a report that we shared with the community. The DPH recommended improvements to the building to improve air quality, and then there were two additional reports that also were generated improvements, and those things have been worked on. Concerns about asbestos incidents in the Green Meadow classroom was brought to our attention on Friday, January 25th, and the town brought in a consultant to assess and the concern and discuss an abatement, an abatement plan. The principals at the Green Meadow School, the staff, they're all working hard on a relocation plan, and they were working hard on multiple plans depending on what could have potentially come from the information we've been receiving. But we have been working collaboratively, we have been meeting with the leadership, the administration and the leadership have been meeting, to try and work on plans, but nothing's been formalized, and it seems like they change day to day. That's the hard part, because it all depends on the data that's coming in day to day. Today, we did receive test results regarding the concerns about cross-contamination that we've heard of asbestos, and the report confirms that our plan to keep the students and staff in the newer wing, the built-in the 80s, and seal off the old wing for abatement is an appropriate plan. We've communicated updates as best as we could through multimedia resources, but we appreciate, and we appreciate the community's patience in waiting until we have the facts. So I'd just like to give some kudos to the school community members, because they've all been working on improving communication. Even today, Member, Member Mauro Hogan was working through her role on the Policy Subcommittee on a Communication Rubric for Administrators and on Policy 215, Parent Complaints and Concerns, to help improve communication. And I just want to give kudos to all the school community members, because I know that they care about that. It's been one of their priorities, it's been something we've been working on together. And that's my report.
Thank you, Bob. So first, we have a school committee bylaw, which is Policy Number 102, Article 6, Section 2, which typically limits citizen comment to three minutes, and presentations of citizen comments for a total of 10 minutes. However, given, given the size of the audience, the magnitude of the concerns, at this time, I'm going to ask the members of the committee to move forward a motion to extend the length of citizens' comments for 60 minutes. Following that 60 minutes, if we are still in an atmosphere where there are new questions being posed and new information being given, I will entertain a second motion to again extend the community participation in the citizens' comments event. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to extend the duration of citizens' comments. Do I have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mauro. Motion's been made and seconded. Do I have any further discussion on this motion? All in favor? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Next, I would like to point out and reintroduce the two gentlemen that are sitting here at the table with me. To my left is Aaron McClosco, he's our DPW and Facilities Director, and to his left is Mr. George Barrows, excuse me, Bezros, who is the Director of Operations for Universal Environmental Consultants. And then immediately to my right is a podium, and I would like to point out that for the purposes of the conversation tonight, in the interest of meaningful dialogue, in the interest of meaningful conversation, respectful conversation, and a two-way participation in this meeting, the school committee has hired a facilitator to moderate this conversation, and I'd like to introduce him at this time. His name is Richard Cohen, he's the Principal of Great Pond Resolutions, and he specializes in facilitation, training, mediation, team development, and coaching. So Richard, if you'd like to come up to the podium and take over the microphone, I'd like to give Richard an opportunity to talk about some of the norms that he would like to establish, and at this time, Richard, you, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay? Okay, so I work at Great Pond Resolutions. For the last 30 years, I have helped, I'm one of these crazy people who likes going into situations where people are not getting along and having a difficult time communicating, and seeing if I can help them make it more effective and productive. So I've been doing this for many years, I, for many years I focused on schools, so I've worked in probably 50% of the school systems in Massachusetts, and I'm delighted to be here and hope I can, can make this even more of a productive time. You should know, I got a call just two days ago from Don Capello, who I, I've never met anybody on the school committee, who a colleague of mine lives in Maynard, knew of me and recommended me to Don, and so I was asked whether I would come tonight and help facilitate. So one of the things I want to make clear is I am not on anybody's side in this discussion. I'm kind of a neutral person who's here mostly to act, serve as kind of facilitator, referee if need be, but with an ultimate goal of seeing if this can be the most productive conversation that you can have, so that people can learn, understand, see different perspectives, and so on. I think the, the structure is going to be that there will be three minutes for each person, whoever wants to come up, and there's no list, right? Just anybody can come up and talk. I'll set a little timer just so we can know how, how much that time is to give you a warning, when, when your time's going to end. I would like to suggest some rules just that I have found useful, having facilitated many such conversations. So the first is just to be respectful. This is actually even in your bylaws that it's important, and, and that means, you know, speaking from your own experience, what you think, what you feel, not, not you, 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 not you're insensitive, not you're a jerk, not you've done the wrong thing. This is, you know, speaking from your own experience. Secondly, being curious, trying to understand, you know, of course, everybody knows their own perspective and their own experiences and how, how you feel. What leads to the best outcomes are trying to figure out what the, the other perspective is, is saying. You know, we have a situation here, and again, I just learned about this two days ago, where at a high level, and I'm an outsider, it seems like we have a school committee and administration that feels like they're trying to do the right thing by this, what's going on in this building. They're trying to be prudent, and if anything, they feel like they're erring on the side of caution. And then we have from reading a lot of, you know, social media posts and reading the news articles, we have many parents who I can tell feel that that's not the case, that there's been a lack of transparency. And of course, everyone's concerned about their own kids and feels like their kids are at risk, and understandably, people are very upset. So we have people who see things differently. So hopefully today, maybe, we can see a little bit of the other perspective. You don't have to agree with the other perspective just to see it, understand it. And lastly, be succinct. I, I'll do some things just when someone's talking, if it seems like a theme, I might ask if other people feel similarly, just so we can get a sense. How many people out there feel similarly to the person who just spoke? Okay, so that's it. Just to get a sense of who's here, how many of you have a student who is in the wing that was closed? Just raise your hand. Okay, so it looks like roughly half of the people here, I would say. How many of you have a student at Green Meadow who's not in that wing, but who's in the other, this part that's still open? So that's, actually, I guess people could have students in both, right? How many of you are, are teachers or other staff at the school? Raise your hand. Okay. Wait, whoa. Great. How many of you would, would fall into the category of other? Not, not any of those, those three? Okay, great. Okay, so without further ado, what I'd like to do is invite whoever wants to start first, come up to, there's, I guess we'll use either mic? Is that it? Go up to either mic, or should we just use one, one or the other?
Pat and AJ, both mics are live, correct? Yes, then let's use both mics, please.
Okay, so again, I'll, I'm going to set a timer, we'll hear it when, I'll set it for 2 minutes and 45 seconds, just so you know when it's timed. Okay. Why don't you say your name and then go.
Yes, I'm just, I'm just going to read what I wrote here, and I think that's, okay. Hello, my name is Megan Cortler, and I have twin daughters in kindergarten. Emotions and tensions are understandably running high surrounding the asbestos, asbestos and air quality issues. A letter prepared by parents addressed to Bob, Aaron, Justin, and Don has been posted online to gather signatures of support. 315 signatures were collected in a 24-hour period. The letter has been delivered, and I request to be included in the meeting minutes. I will read the letter now and want to reinforce the intention is to have a productive conversation. I would like to be received and responded with the same intention. The intention of this letter is to have a productive discussion concerning Green Meadow asbestos management. There has been recent discussions with, within school committee meetings, October 4th, 2018, January 24th, 2019, about disturbing ceiling tiles in Green Meadow during mold inspections. During these discussions, there was no mention to the public that ceiling tiles were handled, that ceiling tiles handled and damaged contained asbestos, or that appropriate asbestos safeguards were being implemented during any maintenance work. Pursuant to the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response, Response Act, AHARA, school districts are required to perform an original inspection to determine whether asbestos-containing materials are present, and then re-inspect asbestos-containing material in each school every three years. Develop, maintain, and update an asbestos management plan, and keep a copy at the school. Provide yearly notification to parent, teacher, and employee organizations on the availability of the school's asbestos management plan, and any asbestos-related actions taken or planned in the school. Designate a contact person to ensure the responsibilities of the public school district or nonprofit school are properly, properly implemented. Perform periodic surveillance of known or suspected asbestos-containing building material. Ensure the trained and licensed professionals perform inspections and take response, response actions. Provide custodial staff with asbestos awareness training. Based on the limited information provided, we can only surmise that 1, asbestos cross-contamination is likely to have occurred periodically throughout the building for several years; 2, adequate safety precautions in handling asbestos-containing materials, ACM, were not followed; and accountability to the function and follow of implementing these safety protocols have failed. We understand that certain areas have been tested, and those results are forthcoming. We expect the following actions: public full access to all test results and the asbestos-independent consultants involved; please provide a forum for the public to hear the recommendations so the community can gain reassurances from the experts directly; verification by test results that asbestos in the entire school is contained and within compliance with the AHARA regulations; documentation of the steps taken and when on the recommendations following the 2017 asbestos inspection report regarding the removal, repair of asbestos material by August 31st, 2017. We are regretfully unsatisfied with the oversight of Green Meadow's asbestos management. These avoidable and undue stresses on students and staff mid-year could have been avoided. Once a short-term abatement plan is established, we expect parents to be able to collaboratively participate with the district in a project post-mortem. Additionally, we want improved communication as a whole within the district by re-establishing communications subcommittee or task force. Parent participation to improve communication procedures is vital for our schools to succeed. We hope to collaboratively be given the opportunity to better our schools and community, and to further, further utilize our resources and energies in a more effective way. Sincerely concerned, Green Meadow community members.
Okay. Thank you. So we, we are setting this up so that if, if there's, if you want to respond at any point, you can respond. I don't know if, do you want to go to the next person, or does anybody on the, on the school committee or administration want to respond, or should we go forward?
Aaron, would you like to take a moment to, to respond to some of the concerns that are in?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
While you're getting ready, just to make sure I understand, you were saying, and obviously a lot of, I can tell, a lot of people agree with you, that you feel like there was not, you were not informed when, you were not told that there were asbestos in the tile, is that correct? Early, soon enough? Or at all?
Yeah, we, there, there has been no notification that asbestos materials are, are in the school.
So many parents didn't even know that there was asbestos in the tiles?
For...
Back, back in October when the first, when the thing first...
I'm not, I'm not aware of any communication that's ever disclosed that.
Yep. And so you're asking going forward for all the reports and just to be kept informed of what, what this system's doing?
Well, since the law indicates that that should be provided on a yearly basis, then yes, I would like us to comply with the law.
All right, thank you.
My name's Aaron McClosco, I'm the Director of Public Works for the town of Maynard. The town of Maynard supports the Maynard Public Schools with facilities and maintenance of the facilities, including Green Meadow School. I want to thank Megan for the letter. I did receive it earlier. I read it. It's very good, a lot of good points, and I do appreciate it. There's a lot of information that... There's a lot of information that, I agree, it's been a very stressful time for a lot of people, I'm sure, in this room, including myself, and I know the members of the board, our consultants, and everyone that's been involved in that. So I do appreciate the letter, and very well-written. Couple of notes, I do agree that there's been a lack of communication, the annual letter that didn't, that was supposed to go out, that's required, didn't go out. We've acknowledged that, and we will rectify that moving forward, for sure. As far as some of the other points, the ceiling tiles during the mold inspections, none of the staff had moved any of the ceiling tiles, modified them. There were some recommendations that stained ceiling tiles be replaced or repaired. There were some openings in the ceiling. We tried our best to close up as many of those openings as possible without disturbing any of the existing asbestos tiles in the kindergarten preschool wing, excuse me, the preschool classroom, our kindergarten classrooms. Also, part of the recommendations that we received from the indoor air quality assessment from the Department of Public Health was to replace stained ceiling tiles, because they could potentially mold those asbestos, those ceiling tiles do contain asbestos. So in order to do that, we need to do a remediation. We are in an abatement of that area. We're working with our indoor air quality consultants, Universal Environmental Consulting, to plan that. We've been in communication with the Department of Labor Standards, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection this week, and we're establishing those plans for moving forward. We do have copies of the plans available for the public. I know that they're posted online this week, and we received a number of calls for direct copies, and we're trying to direct people to the website to get that. We do have a designated person who's been trained as a designated individual for the plans. We have employees who, consultants who do have awareness training, and we do have a yearly, we have our, excuse me, our three-year inspection that was done, 2017. We do do six-month surveillance, and we can make that available. And our next six-month surveillance is coming up in March, and there's obviously been a lot of, a lot of change since then. I know there was a concern about a piece of ceiling tile, as Dr. Girardi mentioned, on the 25th, that had fallen down in one of the classrooms, and that classroom has since been moved, and since then, that entire wing has been shut down out of abundance of caution. And that piece of ceiling tile was removed. We've been in contact with the Department of Labor Standards on the appropriate disposal of that. We've told them every step of the way what we've done, gotten as much guidance from them, and amassed the EP as possible. According to them, we're doing everything that we should be doing correctly. We're trying to move forward. We brought in our, again, our consultants who are joining us this evening. We did an inspection of the building, again, this evening with our consultants. We did do some air monitoring, excuse me, some wipe samples throughout the building. We sampled 34 locations on Tuesday throughout Green Meadow. All the classrooms in the wing that were shut down, as well as a number of other classrooms throughout the building. We did receive negative results of 31 out of 34 locations, which is very good. There were three locations that tested for less than 1% of asbestos. We immediately notified the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, as well as Department of Labor Standards, to give them that update, and to seek guidance of how we should best move forward. They recommended that we bring in our consultants to establish a remediation plan. We have, right now, a licensed asbestos abatement contractor in the building cleaning the two rooms that were outside of the area that is currently shut down. So those will be cleaned and ready, and ready for occupancy tomorrow morning. We'll be doing, we have an industrial hygienist on site right now, doing continuous air monitoring, and we'll make sure that that room is completely clean and safe before it reopens tomorrow morning. The other wing will remain shut down, and while we establish our plan for moving forward, on how to make sure it's as safe as possible before we reopen that wing. So, that's a couple of updates that I have, and to address a couple of concerns.
The three locations that tested, you said less than, what was the percentage?
Less than 1%.
Less than 1%. Are those wipe or air?
Wipe.
Okay.
Okay, you've been waiting patiently, so you can go next, and then you can go.
Hi, I'm Kelly King. I actually work at Fowler, but tonight, I'm not here standing as an employee, I'm standing as a mom, a daughter, an aunt, and a friend. I just want to actually say, Erin, one of the last school board committee meetings, you did state that tiles were being replaced with mold in them. That was the, right before back-to-school night, 9/27, we had janitors at 4:00 AM replacing tiles. So I just want to say that I don't know where your information's coming from, but that is what we saw.
Do you want to respond to that?
Yes, please. So there were tiles replaced in areas of the school. Some, not all the ceiling tiles in the agreement of school contain asbestos, so we are able to replace ceiling tiles that do not contain asbestos. So we replaced some ceiling tiles that were stained. We did reinstall some ceiling tiles in gaps of areas that do have an asbestos ceiling, but did not disturb that ceiling.
You want to go next, and then you can go. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Gary Jackson, I have a kindergarten...
Go up to the mic, just so we can hear. Otherwise, people can't hear you.
It's a big room.
I made a decision early this week to get my daughter out of school until we got a result, so I guess this question more, I think, is going to be for you.
Okay.
When you say "we", I'm assuming that means him?
We, to which part?
Making the plan?
Correct.
Because that's not done by you, that's done by your person?
Correct, yes, consultants, yes.
Correct. Do you have a report? Are you going on record saying it's safe to have the kids in the school? Are you ready to say that? Because so far, they're saying they've done everything to keep the students and the faculty safe, but we don't even know yet, because you haven't said that it's okay to do that.
So quite honestly, I think there's still more discussion that needs to be...
So why are we still standing here today? Close the school, and do what you have to do, if you get a report.
But that being said, though, what I'm mainly talking about, what mainly concerns me is, they've taken the adequate measure to start doing a full remediation. No, no, it's in progress to do, they're in progress to do a full remediation. That being said, I did take a walk through that area today. We did review the results of the less than 1%. Less than 1% is trace, and it really is, it's under the EPA and DEP regulation of greater than 1%. Basically, when you have trace, it just needs to be cleaned up, wet wipe, wet wiping, mopping. So, that being said, you, there is no hazard in that area. But, but, what I viewed today with the, with the, some of the tiles that were falling, and that does need to be addressed, and they are addressing it, which, which I believe is going to be done in the near future.
Correct.
My question's not involving what's being addressed now, or in the past, or in the future. My question is, if you had kids in the school, would you allow them to be in the school right now? Would you give a report that says it's okay for people to be in the building? If you can, I can send my daughter back to school. Until then, I'm not sending her back to school.
Personally, and I'll take you back, personally, seeing the results and the reports that they just had done, I would say, yes, it is safe. I don't see any public health hazard in there, no.
And who was also, what's done by somebody qualified to?
So, we did EnviroSafe Engineering, who's a licensed asbestos inspector, completed the swipes.
And that report says the school is safe for people to be in the building?
So that report is lab samples as a result of the swipes. Our consultant reviewed the samples, interpreted the samples, because he's the professional.
Correct. So the less than 1% really does not concern me. Again, what concerned me, and that was what I had started with, was the condition of the building, which is being addressed appropriately by the school department.
Okay, so I'm confused, so...
By the town.
Did I just end this, so I don't have any more questions?
Yeah.
You're saying it is safe for the kids to be in the school now? I can send my daughter back to school?
I'm saying, I'm saying there is no public health hazard there right now, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And can, before you sit down, can I get your name? I didn't catch it.
First name's Gary, last name's Jackson.
Gary Jackson, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think, I think you're next.
Hi, my name's Jen Kranek. I don't currently have students that are in the kindergarten wing right now. I have a second grader and a fifth grader. However, they were both in multiple years of preschool, and in the main classroom of contention in the kindergarten wing, both of them. Now, going back to quote Justin earlier, who said there was information by the hour for the last two weeks. None of that was communicated to the parents, and that's concerning in and of itself. The second thing that's concerning to me is that, again, going back to this lack of sharing of information, I personally emailed Dr. Girardi Friday, so six days ago, stating to him that I had two children that had been in that main classroom that was the problem, and had been multiple years in the preschool. But going forward, what health issues should I be looking for? What health issues should we be looking out for as a district for our children, whose safety is our primary concern? And again, I got no response to that. Thank you.
Okay, so, so the question is, even people who, whose kids are not in that wing now, fear that they might be affected long-term, and should they look out for anything?
Well, I did want to address the email, and I am sorry if I missed that email. I know I did spend all day... Well, I do know that I spent all day Saturday and most of Super Bowl Sunday, up until the game, and then all of a sudden, I stopped.
Hey, folks, this, this is, this is not following our ground rules.
So, I'd just like to say that I spent most of the day Saturday, most of the day Sunday, answering parent emails, and also, what Erin was talking about, even though things are changing minute to minute, there wasn't definitive facts. So the point was that we might hear, well, we need to go in this direction, maybe we need to work with the, you know, the Department of Environmental Protection called, let's check in with them. Those aren't facts that we could share, but, you know, that was keeping us busy, all of us, and, and so, at some point, when I realized I wasn't keeping up with emails, I asked our assistant superintendent to start answering emails on our behalf. So again, I'm sorry if I missed that particular email. We did try to keep up with them. But as Justin said, when he said things were changing, they weren't facts, they were plans, they were, what do we do next? Who do we talk to next? Or when somebody would call, they would say, well, maybe this is contradictory, maybe you should look at that. And so they weren't facts, and our fear is, if we provide the community with something that's not factual, then that wouldn't be good either, because then they would be upset with that. And we don't want to make people more upset. So that's my answer in regard to communication.
Is there any answer from the consultant regarding, are there things that people who've had kids that are in that affected area should look out for going forward?
Quite honestly, the, the material that's, that's in the building, that I witnessed as far as ceiling tiles, by EPA regulations, it's considered a non-friable material, which means it cannot be pulverized in your, in your hand. But according to the DLS here in Massachusetts, they do like to have that listed as friable, because the, the material can break, can break down and cause a fiber release. That's why we have an operations and management plan as part of the AHERA, to help any staff members that are working in the area, any outside contractors, to deal with it appropriately. But, but also, it's going to be, it's very difficult to get a fiber release out of that type of material, that's going to do any type of damage health-wise. So I would probably tell you that there's, I don't believe that there's any type of health hazard to have any person as, in any part of that building. We do 60% of the schools in Massachusetts, and I can't tell you one school system that doesn't have an asbestos problem. As long as it's well-managed and maintained, asbestos really is not a problem, and it's not released in the air unless it's physically damaged. The one material that I would be concerned about, if teachers ever see it in their room, is thermal system insulation, which is TSI, which is the pipe covering. If they ever see that type of material damage, that's something that would, fibers would be released a lot more frequently than a floor tile, a ceiling tile, any caulking that's on windows, doors. Those are the areas that I'd be concerned with. But as far as what I saw in that building, there was nothing to be concerned with, health-wise.
Okay, thank you. So, of course, you all can take that, or leave it, but this is an expert saying, as far as you know, there's nothing to be concerned about, by, from those asbestos tiles?
Right.
Thank you.
I got it, I got it. My doctor, my son, that is not right.
Okay, well, let's, let's wait your turn, you'll have a turn. I don't know which of you two is next, but...
My name is Mike Waldron. I'm the MEA president and spokesman for the MEA. I'm also a parent. I currently have a second grader, I currently have a third grader, and my oldest is in the sixth grade in the Fowler, and he went through the Green Meadow as well. So I'm kind of wearing two hats here. First, in terms of the AHERA report, our concerns are that, that AHERA report was put out in 2017, a three-year evaluation. There were certain remediations that were made, certain suggestions that were made in that report. And in that report, it says that they were required to be finished by August of 2017. So, my question is, is, should those remediations, if they listed an area of, say, 20 or 40 square feet of ceiling in a particular classroom in 2017, if they said that that should have been done and completed by August of 2017, then why wasn't it done? Secondly, yeah, every six months, someone who is in charge of the AHERA report from the town is supposed to be going through that building and checking, you know, if there's any loose tiles, if there's any loose anything anywhere. They're supposed to be making notations on that document by law. When we got a copy of the document that was at the Green Meadow, there are absolutely no documentations, nothing made on that document. So, I'm a little concerned about that, because when the board or the town says that work has been done, and there has been no notations done at all, then how do we know exactly what was done and when it was done? Third, Erin, you mentioned that you have documentation, and we're talking about transparency. The MEA requested two days ago for copies of that documentation, and to this point, we still have not received it. So if you actually have it at your fingertips, we would appreciate it if you would send it to us. Also, I want to just make clear, because there's reference that this all started Friday, January 25th. The town needs to understand that teachers at Green Meadow have been getting sick, and for the past two or three years. Tiles have been falling for the past, pieces of tile have been falling for the past two or three years. This is nothing new. We have been documenting it, we have been telling the administration about it. Because the ceiling is leaking, it makes the tiles wet. When they did the air quality report back in September, October, when they came to do the report, I walked through with that testing. And there were so many tiles in the preschool classrooms that were soaking wet. Bob, you were with me. The gentleman that was, that did the testing pointed them out to us.
Yep.
Okay? There may not be black toxic mold climbing the walls, but there is a mold issue. And our concern as teachers is not only for our staff... Our concern is not only for our staff, but as teachers, we put our children, our students first. And we're concerned for the students, the children in our classrooms. We have documentation, we have pictures of tiles that have fallen in kindergarten classrooms...
So it's past the three minutes, just, so you should wrap it up soon, please.
Before the, before the, before the wing was shut, the tiles fell, and tile debris was in children's toys for a period of five months before it was cleaned up. Okay? This is an ongoing problem. Again, I agree, there may not be black toxic mold climbing the walls, but there is a mold issue, there is a health issue in that wing, and I don't like the fact that it's being insinuated, this, this just happened last Friday. This has been going on for quite some time.
Okay. All right, so just before you speak, so I take both from your remarks, and the loud applause for your remarks, that there's a sense that the town has not been on top of maintaining the building and keeping everybody informed. At least that, that's the way you feel, and also, and also that there is a problem, might not rise to the level of, whatever, a formal problem, but there's a problem that's affecting people's health in the building. That's the feeling, anyway. Does anybody want to respond before we go to the next one?
Sure, I will.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't, I can't respond to the LEA designee question that was, that came up, or the mold situation. I'm not privy to that, or apprised of it. But I will respond to, on the AHERA, when you see dates under the recommendations for anything that was noted friable, that needs to be removed, those are only recommendations, those are not mandatory dates, okay? And that, that is what the DLS requires us to put, so the, the school system or the town can plan a budget and have these, these items repaired. And if, it's something that's internal to the town and the, and the school department, if they can't afford it that year because of whatever reasons that, that may arise, they are supposed to put it on the next fiscal year budget, and try to get as many of these items done. Because some of them can be costly, especially if there's thousands of square feet of something, of a homogeneous material... of a homogeneous material. We also try to stipulate on those recommendations what the minor repairs are. And if it's something that's 10 linear feet, five square feet, those are within reason, within budgetary, where they can actually get these things fixed. So, I just wanted to comment on that particular item to let you know that those are not requirements by the DLS, but they are recommendations and it's up to the school department of the town to budget for those repairs.
Yeah? So, I have a follow-up to that. So, those items that are listed on the AHERA report that say they need to be done by 2017, we've been working closely with our insurance agency and have a claim approved for ceiling replacement due to the ongoing roof leaks in that hallway. So, we are, the school department and the town are working closely with our consultants to develop an abatement plan for that hallway. That was in reference to the note that came out from Dr. Girardi last week. So, we'll be abating that hallway on all those ceiling tiles, the kindergarten, preschool wing, and doing that work. And that is the work specifically listed in the AHERA report and replacing that with non-asbestos-containing ceiling tiles.
By the way, can everybody hear back there when the people up here are talking? Yes? You want to say something?
Yeah, there were...
No?
Talk louder.
Yeah, pull the mics closer to you when you talk in the future.
There's a little bit of feedback, I hope. But anyway, I also want to thank the town because for already two years, I'm going into the next year, we'll be into our third year, we have been applying to the MSBA for a new building. And so, we're going to continue to do that. We believe we have a strong grant. And they are limited, the MSBA, by the amount of projects they can do each year. But I feel confident that we've been trying to get the whole building replaced as well and that the Board of Selectment School Committee have to vote to approve that grant and they have for two years already in a row. And I'm confident that they'll do that again. And we're going to work on that grant to try and get a new Green Meadow building for this community.
Okay. So, by the way, can you hear the alarm when it goes off? Is it too soft? All right, I'll hold it up to the thing. Go ahead.
So, at the beginning of the week, I had a bunch of questions...
Want to say your name first?
Sean Casey.
Sean Casey?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I had a bunch of questions for you. Since then, I've actually found out the answers to all my own questions. I spent a lot of time on the phone with people I know in the DEP and DLS.
You get a little closer to the mic so everybody can hear.
I've spent time talking with DEP and DLS officials, people that I know have talked about it. I've learned a lot about what you've told them and the truth. I'm kind of appalled it took parents and teachers' pressure to really get that wing closed off. Like I've said, when I've talked to them, I talked to them, DEP, about GM's asbestos problem. And I was informed by the DEP that in their report, it was reported to them that the recent tile had fallen. It was immediately evacuated, closed off, and appropriate, DEP's broad and appropriate actions were taken place. I did let him know that it wasn't immediate and he was surprised to know that, that it wasn't immediate. So, the wing of that school and classroom was not addressed properly, which obviously allows cross-contamination throughout the school for some time before the wing was closed. The state requires after an abatement in a school, an air and surface asbestos test. A report on the process from tile collapse will after the licensed contractor cleans it up. This report is also to be filed with the state as well as a copy kept in the school for anyone to read. This is not done because of contamination throughout the entire school. The air and surfaces in the entire school should be tested throughout the entire school. Going back a little bit, I've heard reports that you only knew about asbestos since 2017. I, through DEP, you've been listed Green Meadow with the DEP as containing asbestos for years, years. It's on the DEP, anybody can look at it. The gentleman told me, said it was closer to when the AHERA was enacted, that they were listed as having asbestos. I also went through all the abatements that had been filed with the state in Maynard since 2002 and there's not one, not a licensed contractor's once filed an abatement with the state that he did work at the Green Meadow. So, my question is, have you never replaced a single tile in that school since 1990? 89? So, you know, past work when it's done in the ceiling, running wires, on lights near tiles, that all is covered by AHERN and is supposed to be addressed by licensed people. You know, whether it was done or not, I don't know. There's no reports, you know? So, it means unlicensed people probably did the work. Every time they did, our kids, teachers have all been exposed to asbestos. And as you know, asbestos in the lungs is irreversible, correct?
Correct.
It's there forever. So, even if 1% has been found that in a child's lung is irreversible and permanent, correct? Staff, if you know about asbestos, staff and janitors are supposed to get proper training. AHERA, you know, paints it for you. I'd be interested to know if they've gotten that training, especially janitors who've cleaned up messes. You know, every time work on the ceiling was done, there's never been records...
You should begin to wind down. Nothing personal, that's the time.
You know, due to these facts, I'd like to see the school closed, everything tested before our kids are let back in. Tim Goulding is appointed, Maynard's designee for the AHERA rep. Icoffers immediate termination. He's done nothing he's supposed to, whether he still is. Tim Goulding, he's on the DEP website. He's listed at Maynard's designated AHERA rep. He's failed the kids in every single way. DEP for their seven, three, and annual reports all have no on them. They haven't been filed. You know, I'm going to skip a lot just to save you some time. You know, Janet McCann, I talked to, the Department of Labor, she's the one in charge of enforcing AHERA. I've talked with her. She's going to come in, she's going to investigate, she's probably going to fine the school because you haven't been compliant with AHERA really ever. You know, I'd like to know how you feel about those fines that were 100% avoidable, it's just a simple walk-around once a year. All right. Some of the requests I have are just, you know, these absences over the next, you know, the past two weeks, they should be excused. Parents have the right to discern, to keep their kids home.
All right.
Pre-K, I'd like to see those people who pay, you know, a lot of money be reimbursed for the week their kids were not allowed to go to school. I'd like the school, I'd like the school closed, everything, surface and air tested before they're allowed back in, the kids.
All right, I got to ask you to stop, I'm sorry, just because, but let's give them a, so you're saying clearly on many levels, you feel like the proper procedure has not been followed and you're saying, and you're saying, "Close, you know, close the school for now," and you're getting a lot of applause. Anybody want to say anything in response to that?
So, I will, I will...
Can you drop the audience?
Oh, I'm sorry. Certainly. So, as far as absences, I'm sure if you write a note to the principal, we're usually very flexible about that. If it's over your concerns, they will be excused absences. As far as pre-K reimbursement, I know the pre-K teachers are really interested in serving their community and they had some ideas on how they could possibly make up additional time, but we haven't gotten to that point yet. We really just want to get them going and get the preschool back up and running. I will look at that and consider the tuition reimbursement certainly, or if there's some way that we can offer additional services in lieu of the services that were missed. So, I just, we will look at those concerns. As far as closing the school, you know, we do have to work together and determine what is the best interest of the school district and also all of the students and staff in the school, but also based on the reports that we have and the data that we have. So, that still is a consideration, but at this point, as you heard, we're cleaning the rooms where there was any trace. So, you've heard that our consultant believes that it's safe. But I will, you know, agree, those other things need to be addressed for you, so I just want to let you know that. Okay?
All right. You said that you said the place is safe for kids to go to, no dangers. My son was hospitalized four times while he was in kindergarten. His pediatrician said, "Once he went into third grade, which is a whole different wing, second and third grade, no problems. No breathing issues, no nothing." And he says it could be from the air and most likely from there. And I'm not the only parent who's had kids hospitalized because they went to that classrooms. There's many parents out here that have had parents and kids hospitalized. This has to end. We need to close the school down today. I don't think so. Oh, there, it's back. Okay, just out of curiosity, how many, you, raise your hand if you feel pretty confident that your kids have been affected by, all right, it looks like about 25, 30 people. How many of you aren't sure, you know, I guess many of you are fear that that's the case. Okay. I think you're next.
Yeah, what about our staff?
What did you say?
What about our staff?
Oh, staff. How many of the staff feel like you have been affected? It's like at least 10 to 15 hands. Okay, I think you're next.
Good evening. My name's Justin Bordelai. I have a child in kindergarten and preschool. There's a few things I want to address. The first is, there's been a lot of talk about the acceptable levels from the EPA, things like that. Just a little bit of background about myself, I'm a scientist in the pharmaceutical industry, so I'm a biologist by trade. And I'll tell you, there are EPA standards where you cannot be above that, but that doesn't mean below that is perfectly safe. To be clear, there is no safe level of mold and asbestos to breathe. My target wouldn't be the EPA's level, it would be as minimum as possible. So, I want the best for my children. So, that's the first thing. The other thing I want to address is communication. My daughter was in the kindergarten classroom where the tile fell. She came home and she told me about it. She said, "The tile fell today and I was scared." And I didn't know what that was. I didn't get any communication from the school. And actually, the only reason I know is because Ms. Krasinski reached out to me. So, I want to say thank you to Ms. Krasinski. And I do think I eventually got a letter home, but the letter basically said, "A tile fell. It was cleaned and that's the end of it." There was nothing about asbestos, there was nothing about mold, there's nothing about the classroom being closed down. I had to get this information from my five-year-old. So, I think we need to have better communication. I know there's a lot of updates on Facebook, but I really think it should be coming through email so all the parents can get it through their preferred contact. And the last thing I'd like to address is just to kind of let you know how this is personally affecting my children. My daughter's five, she's in kindergarten. She loves kindergarten, but she's not liked it so much these last couple of days. She says she's getting bored of watching movies, bored of coloring, so, you know, it's unfortunate because you only have one year in kindergarten. And then my son is in preschool. He's in special needs, so he's supposed to be getting state-mandated care that he's not been receiving this week because of the syndrome.
Okay, thank you very much. You want to say something?
Yeah, Justin, I know that the special ed director of student, the director of Student Services had asked the principals or, they sent out a communication that we will be making up compensatory services for students with special needs in the preschool. So, we will be making that up, but again, because we closed it down so quickly, you know, we didn't have a backup plan. The other thing is, I think that, so, we are going to make compensatory services for students with special needs who missed those services this week. So, I wanted to address that for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Again, just as an outsider, one of the dynamics that's, it seems like is happening is people like Justin are saying, you know, "No level is safe. I don't want any of this, my kids exposed to any of this." On the other hand, we have, you know, an expert saying, "This is the level above which is considered unsafe and this is not, this is below that level." And also that you don't feel like it's, you would send your kids there, correct? Is that, am I paraphrasing you correctly?
Did you say, "I don't feel like I would send my kids there?" Or I feel that my kids would be safe?
No, you would send your, you would feel comfortable, yes. So, this is, you know, this is where you're at as a group, you know? People are not satisfied. On the other hand, the people who are the experts, for what that's worth, I know it's your own kids, you know, you want to be, air on the side of caution, are saying that it's safe, so, yeah.
That being said, there are a lot of conditions in the building that need to be addressed.
Pull the mic close so people can hear.
Again, I want to reiterate that, that being said, that I feel I would send my children to that school, there are a lot of issues in the building that need to be addressed, which I feel that the town and the school department are addressing at this time.
All right, thank you. All right, go ahead.
My name's Miles Clancy. So, I guess my question is for Aaron. If I understood you correctly, you said that there's an insurance claim that's been submitted based upon the, sorry, the March 2017 asbestos report, is that correct?
Partially correct. So, there's been an insurance claim that's been submitted based upon the damage to the ceiling tiles from ongoing roof leaks in that building.
Okay. When was the damage from, when did the damage happen?
It's an ongoing, damage has been ongoing.
When was the insurance claim filed?
The insurance claim was filed about two weeks ago.
Wow. So, do you actually have documentation that has been submitted?
I can, I can provide that.
Probably, I think, because I think what is important here, I think there's, what you're kind of hitting at, there's a credibility issue here. And there's a lack of documentation of what's been happening, there's a lack of communication. And I think that, you know, that you filed an insurance claim two weeks ago is, you know, you didn't really, you kind of couched your comment by not mentioning that. And the fact that this only happened two weeks ago when we've known about this problem for a while now, I think goes to a credibility issue that now we're just dealing with this now. So, I guess, I have a few other questions. So, when was the school administration first made aware of the issues that were going on? I guess there have been multiple reports going to 2017 and before.
By school administration, do you mean us sitting up here at the table or?
Yeah, I guess the folks that was, the decision-makers who ultimately decided it was time to close down the old wing of the school. When were you first made aware of that?
So, I guess what you're asking is, there's two different layers of administration. There's us at the school committee, you know, budget, policy, you know, evaluating the superintendent. I personally was made aware of it on January the 25th. But then, there's another layer to your question that's a little more nuanced, which is the administration, and I think Dr. Girardi wants to speak to that, so.
So, again, the question was...
When were you made aware of the ongoing asbestos issue?
So, a teacher shared the email with myself and I don't know who else was in that email, but then we, I think the principal, and I know that we notified Aaron right away. And from that point on, Aaron said, "I'll bring adjusters in or I'll bring consultants in and these are the things we have to do." And then we worked together to figure out what the appropriate solution was. Our initial thought was to close the old wing on the, over February vacation and start the abatement process then. But then, due to the concerns of parents and the staff, and again, talking to Mike Waldron by phone even on the weekends, you know, he and I have communicated a lot about his concerns, we decided that it made sense just to close the wing down right away because of the concern.
Right.
So, that was a Friday announcement that we were just going to close it. And then, and then, over the weekend, you know, after talking with Mike and his concerns, we decided to close that wing down, the two weeks early.
Yeah, so, sorry, I'm not interested necessarily in your thought process. I guess I'm interested in the process of how you got from, this has been ongoing for a couple of years, and what's the responsibility of the people who actually see these reports to then escalate these issues to the administration of the school? And why didn't that happen?
My understanding is that...
There's a designated representative who handles, is it the UHILA or AHERA?
AHERA.
Right, so what's their responsibility to notify the school administration?
The assistant facilities manager handles it right now. Before that, there was a facilities manager, I think a year before I started, who was handling that too. And we've had some change in personnel and change in who has been responsible. But I remember going back to a 2011 DEP report where, you know, major renovation to help improve the mold concerns by eliminating all the rugs in the hallways, that was done. And so, that was always been, has been done, you know, by the facilities department, whoever was in charge at the time. So...
Yeah, I guess I'm still not understanding how the information would have gotten to the place where you made this decision on the 25th, right? It's still unclear to me is, what's the escalation point? How did things get to this point that you decided? And who's the person who's responsible for telling you that? What's going on in the school and why, where's the breakdown there?
So, when the teacher...
Am I making sense?
When the teacher reported it.
I feel like I'm being talked to like I'm a crazy person.
What I said was, the teacher filled out a form to the principal and sent an email with pictures to me and the principal. We forwarded it to the facilities department. That's when we realized there was a problem, the facilities department... That's when we realized there was a problem. The Facilities Department, within a day, called the insurance company and said that we need to work on this. That's when it escalated from that point. So I would say January 25-ish is when all of a sudden we realized the insurance...
So, why, so there's reports in August, or, sorry, 2017, how come those never got to you if these are, you know, there's asbestos finding in 2017? Were they escalated to you and said, "Hey, you know, Dr. Girardi, we have some asbestos issues in the building," or did that person say, "Eh, they don't really need to know about that, I'll just kind of deal with it myself?"
I think Aaron would like to speak to that.
Well, I was gonna...
I, that's, I'm sorry, I know I'm way over my time, sorry, sorry, sorry. And I'm not trying to be a smartass, but there's just, it seems like there's a huge breakdown in communication that nobody's taking responsibility for. Everybody's talking about going forward, but to me, the issue is, right? Part of what's important to me as a member of this community is trusting you guys to be able to manage the situation going forward when you haven't demonstrated the necessary judgment and capacity to handle the situation until now. Does that make sense?
Okay, all right.
I'm on, so, thank you.
I'm sorry, this mic is messing up. Let's let Aaron, Aaron, right, you want to respond to that?
Yeah. So, I can't, I'm not going to respond to all the comments, but I can, I guess, the dates, I can provide some clarification on the dates.
Closer.
Closer, right there, is that good?
Closer.
So, I can provide some clarification on the dates. The January 25th was a date that was, we believe Dr. Girardi said he received a photograph and an email from the teacher where the piece of the tile fell. On January, or, the Monday 28th, I notified our insurance company of the situation and filed the claim and got that process rolling. On Tuesday, the 29th, School Department Administration met with the leaders, the teachers' union to discuss air quality concerns, and they specifically brought up the asbestos situation and made administration aware that that was really high priority on their, of theirs. And then on Thursday, the 21st, the claim, we received notification from I that a claim would be approved for remediation and abatement. So we've been moving forward on that and trying to put together plans for abatement of those asbestos-containing ceiling tiles.
Okay, so, thank you. So, there's certainly, in that last comment expressed this feeling like, how can we have confidence in you going forward that you're handling this? That's what a lot, is on a lot of people's minds. You know, I feel badly for you having to stand up. Do you want to just figure out who's behind you in line, and then you can, when you're done, you can go to that person, and it's okay? All right. I think, I think you're next, right?
I'm Julie Katronime. I have two preschoolers in the school and a sign-up follower that went through the school. According to the reports on the district website, you knew about asbestos in Green Meadow for at least two years. And the work was supposed to be done before the start of last school year. Why didn't that work happen by the deadline? It's a question.
Yeah, I, I think our consultant had answered that...
Can you talk on the microphone, we can't hear you?
Yes, I'm sorry. I think the consultant had already answered that question, but I'll let him explain.
No, you didn't.
I think he answered the question about how the AHRAM report is recommendations. I think he answered the question that the AHRAM report is recommendations, that's what I heard him say, and that the town works within their budget and their capital plans to try and make those recommendations happen. That's what I think I heard. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, I, I think, I'm sorry, what's your name?
George.
George was saying that they have to put those dates on just so districts use that for budgeting, et cetera, but it's not a date by which it has to happen, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Why did the district seamlessly ignore the problem until teachers' union brought its people in to run tests on the building?
Just, just to clarify, there are assumptions baked into your questions, because I don't think they feel like they ignored the problem. What, you may feel like they do, I don't think they feel like they ignored the problem.
Yep.
And I'm not, I'm not anybody's side, but I'm just saying, that's what's going on here.
So, as I stated in my update, as soon as a teacher came to the principal and said that she had concerns about mold, we, we brought in the DPH. The DPH actually suggested that we don't bring in extra testing, but out of an abundance of caution and care for our staff, we actually brought in our other consultant, another consultant, to do more specific testing. So there were two reports generated by us before the MTA came in and did their report. And, again, we have been meeting with the MTA, or then the MEA, to discuss the recommendations from all three ports, reports. So actually, we were proactive on, on those matters. And we did do reports before the teachers brought to our attention, before the teachers' association brought to our attention. But when the individual teachers brought things to our attentions, the principals brought them to me, I brought them to Aaron, we worked together. And we worked, we reached out to the teachers' leadership, not just the teachers actually, the staff leadership, the paraprofessionals, teachers, we all worked together.
So, a lot of your time was used by them responding, so if you want to say anything else?
Yes, I would like to. Are there hazardous materials in the building, and how can we be sure one way or another?
So, I would defer to our consultant. I believe that asbestos is a hazardous...
Sure. So, on the AHRAM report, there is a section that identifies all of the asbestos-containing building materials. Some materials, depending on what, again, what the budget is from the school department, or the town, are tested. So it can determine whether it's a negative with asbestos or positive. The, the other homogeneous materials that we identify that are possible suspect materials, if it's not tested, they're known as asbestos, excuse me, oh, I lost my train of thought. They're known as assumed positive, thank you very much. Okay, we have to, we have to assume it that it's positive, okay, until the, the right, appropriate time that the school department has the monetary funds to do the testing, where we can either rule it out, that it's not, or that it is. So, they are, they are all identified. It's, it's basic building materials. You, everybody should be aware of this, and it's at, it should be, every copy should be at the main office front desk for anyone to view, teachers, staff, anybody that's coming in from the outside. And based, any contractor that works in the building, that's the first thing they need to do is hit the AHRAM report, see what is hazardous, and then they know what to touch and what not to touch when they're installing any type of wiring.
And are you going to quarry all these professionals that you're bringing in because they're going to be around kids?
That's the school department's responsibility.
We do quarry all of the professionals that come in.
Okay.
All right, I think, I think maybe there's time for one more, because there's so many people waiting, so go.
Well, we were back and forth talking, so it really wasn't three minutes.
Well, it's been, it's been a lot of time.
Okay. So, 7A, 7B, I'm listing classrooms, 7C, 7D, 7E, 7F, 7G. All these classrooms I just listed are in the pre-K, K wing of GM that is currently shut down, correct? I'm now going to quote your words, Bob, from the school committee on October 24th, 2018. Updates as of today, ceiling tiles have been replaced throughout the building. Replace stained tiles in room 1E, 2E, 4E, 5E. Multiple closets, pre-K and K tile hallways replaced, and replace missing ones in 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, 7E, 7F, and 7G. You stated that these were all touched when they weren't supposed to be. And Aaron, you stated that no teachers touched ceiling tiles. That is not an accurate statement.
Okay.
You had your custodial staff fix all these tile issues and not a licensed professional knowing there was mold and asbestos. Bottom line, you knew there was a hazard in the school. If it wasn't for our teachers and powers who paid for the last report, you would not be investing anything or even shut down that wing. Also, if it wasn't for our teachers and powers digging deeper, asking questions, we wouldn't be getting the transparency we've been asking for from you, Bob. So, thank you from the bottom of our hearts, teachers and powers, for coming, not only about your health and safety, but all of our kids as well. At Green Meadow, the motto is, "We are kind, we are safe, we are learners." And we need to make sure, as a community, we set the example to keep our children safe so that they can learn. And I want to say one more thing. Bob, you were at Coolidge, correct, before you moved to Fowler?
Yeah.
And why did you move out of Coolidge?
The, the building was having problems, yep.
Just like our building is having problems. You cared more about your health than our teachers and our kids.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Actually, I do believe I reported that I cared about my staff's health, and that's health, and that's...
What about the 51 comments that they made? Did you care about those?
I cared about our staff, and I cared about our students.
Okay, you know, this is, this is verging on a personal attack, which, I don't know. I mean, if that's what you want to do, that's what you can do, but, all right.
3K, 3B.
Yep. All right. So, certainly, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but the implication was, the system and Bob in particular has not done what's right by the students. You want to talk?
Sure. Hi, my name is Jessica Sheldon, and I have two children at Green Meadow. I have a kindergartner, and I have a preschool who actually just started in January. So, my questions are under the assumption that Green Meadow's going to remain open with the wing closed. So I just wanted to voice my concern for the rumors that I've heard that preschool will be relocated in the gymnasium or another space like that with partitions separating the classrooms. I appreciate that you're trying your best to move kids around, and you have only so much space to work with. My three-year-old son has autism, he has sensory issues, he's prone to wandering, he gets overwhelmed, and I can tell you right now that he is not going to be okay. He's not going to feel safe, he's not going to be able to learn in a gymnasium with four preschool classrooms. His, he has an IEP, and per the IEP, he is promised a distraction-free place to learn and be safe. And, you know, unless I want to pay to send my child to private therapy, Green Meadow is my option. And I want to make sure that you're considering children like my son Ben when you relocate these vulnerable kids to a different area of the building.
You want, are you done with your response?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, one of the first meetings, obviously, was the staff leadership. One of the second meetings was with the preschool, with the preschool teachers, actually. And we looked at that area, and our preschool teachers are amazing and amazingly optimistic and willing to do whatever they can do to make the best environment for their students, and really care about providing a quality program, which is why they said, "We can't rush this, we need time to figure out what we're doing." And I agreed with them, and that's why we haven't had preschool for a week. As I said, part of the problems with communicating is that plans change. And so I am not certain that that is now the final plan. I think that the principal has worked with the preschool teachers and may have found an alternate place for the preschool. One of the benefits of having it in the gym that the teachers actually liked was that there's bathrooms right there, there's a sink, there's a lot of facilities that would help with preschool. So having them together there, that was one of the benefits they liked about it when they saw it, and they were being optimistic. But again, I know that that plan is still fluid, so I can't give you an exact. I know that Principal Dankner's working with the preschool, and I know that she has mentioned that it looks like they may change that plan, but I don't know what the details are tonight. So, I do want you to know, we, as I, as I shared with you, I know that the Director of Student Services worked closely with Principal Dankner and with the teachers for all of the IEPs that have been affected, and that they're going to take that into account, they're going to notify parents. If services have been missed, they will make up those services. So I do want to assure you that we are taking very cautious concerns about providing the best services we can for our students, for all of our students, and also making sure that we address those IEPs that you talked about.
Thank you. And I just had one more question. I just wanted to ask, has there been any consideration given to the possibility of, like, mobile trailer classrooms being brought in in the interim?
So, we've tried to look at a lot of different options, and we've looked at mobile classrooms in the past. The, the problem is, they're pretty costly, and I understand there's actually a shortage right now, it's not easy to find them. So that hasn't been a viable consideration, even though we've tried to think of every possible option as to how we could manage lack of space.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. On, on that note, just, I wondered, Superintendent Girardi and others, there's whatever, 150 people here who clearly have done a lot of work and done a lot of research. How, what's the best way for them to provide their suggestions and ideas for good, you know, good ways to move forward in terms of how to manage the next phase?
I do know we're, we're trying to work on other communication strategies and ways that we can find opportunities for, for information to get shared both ways. That's still in the process. I think that we could probably find maybe a master email where people would just email ideas in before we can get to a two-way situation. But certainly, we would be receptive to that. So, maybe we can look at some kind of master email just to receive a lot of the ideas, because there's a lot of people.
Before we move on, Richard, I need to engage in a little parliamentary procedure, if you don't mind. We've gone beyond our one-hour window. I'd like to motion that we extend citizens' comments for another 30 minutes, to be then reimplemented with another motion subsequent. Do I have a second? Any comment? All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, so I think you're next, right, and then we'll come back.
I think you're next.
Oh, I don't know. You're next?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Natasha Rivera.
Hey, Natasha.
I did have a couple of questions, but first I wanted to share a thought. I think a lot of the frustration I'm hearing is because there's been a very big shift in narrative through when things have unfolded, and there's been zero accountability from anyone on anything. In particular, the concern about asbestos was brought to our attention. That was a quote that, Bob, you mentioned for January 25th. The concern about asbestos was actually brought to the district's attention quite earlier in 2017, and that's what has been stated before. You've often stated in your communications, "Out of abundance of caution." So, my question to you would be, out of an abundance of caution, do you feel a year and a half is appropriate to respond?
So, again, we work collaboratively with the town, we work on budgets. I heard the consultant who helps Aaron as far as understanding what needs to be done, gives us advice. That's a process, part of the budgeting process, part of the yearly process. So even though that was known in 2017, the immediate emergency didn't happen until January 25th or so. Once it became an immediate concern, then we addressed it differently by going with, I'm sorry. So, again, I, I think what I was stating was, once it became an immediate concern, the teacher shared it with us, then we took action to get the insurance company involved and get the different things that need to get done.
Do you understand, though, why people would have a hard time believing that? Because of the time period that lapsed in between the inspection recommendations and what you're saying, "Out of abundance of caution," very regularly through the communications shared?
I understand.
Okay. My other part, my other question was more about the information sharing, which someone else touched on. Inspections happen, and I want to understand at what point the information is shared with the district from the DPW. So, inspection happens, there's concerns, and then what? Because I know the state has very clear guidelines for the superintendent to follow up on how to implement things. And so I think the, the communication piece, or the lack of, or the breakdown communication is not really being acknowledged, and there is no effort to say, "Maybe we could have done something differently," or acknowledgement to that fact, that maybe we could have been more communicative, maybe we could have been more responsive. It's been very defensive, like, "This is what we've done," but no acknowledgement that we probably could have done better. I think our staff and our students deserve that.
So, I'll acknowledge to you that maybe we could have done things better, and that we're reassessing that right now through the process of creating the plans. So I will acknowledge that to you tonight, Natasha.
Thank you. The other question I had was about the various communications that are coming in. It's been very difficult for people to keep up. They're coming through various emails, different folks, different mediums. I really would like to see a central depository, and I know Megan had shared this in her letter, but there really needs to be some type of central place where staff can access, or community can access, the reports. can access the reports, the inspection, and the reports, not just 2017. Where are the other reports? Where are the actions that were done with that? And I think, you know, the response has been for you, that you've been infiltrated with a lot of, you know, feedback from the community. Well, because no one has access to information. It's not very transparent on what's happening. And so it makes it very difficult to know, are our kids safe? What are the action steps happening?
So I will acknowledge that we can have a, do a better job of having a repository for that type of information. And I'd just like to point out that as soon as this has been happening, we have been trying to put all the documents up on the website, but I think a special repository would be a good place, as you're pointing out, so.
Natasha, I can speak to that just ever so slightly, although a lot of this happens beyond our specter.
Yeah.
Dawn met with our technology director on Friday to discuss something very much like you're requesting. So we're trying to make that happen.
Okay.
All right, so you're, I think you should finish up.
Yep, I have one more question. So it is stated that the remediation or the abatement process won't be happening while school is also in session, where one wing will be closed and one wing will be open. Is that correct?
I'll let Erin speak to that.
Okay.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Is it correct that the abatement process for the old wing will happen simultaneously where students will be in session in the other part of the school?
We're still working out the abatement plan with our environmental consultants and that plan will be approved by DEP and Department of Labor Standards. So we're working that plan out. It's not finalized, so I can't, I don't want to give you an inaccurate answer this time.
When will that be known to the public?
As soon as we have a finalized plan, we can provide that to the public.
Approximately?
We're looking to start February vacation, somewhere in that timeframe. So ahead of that, we will provide some notification and keep the public updated.
With that in mind?
Yeah, and that communication will come from the school department.
Okay. With the idea that it is in session simultaneously with the students, there's been a lot of concern about ventilation and how with an old building, if it will be able to handle appropriate ventilation for the students that are there? And what type of sampling of air quality will be happening on a day-to-day basis to make sure that any seal during the abatement process is not broken? These are things that parents are worrying about and is it worth the risk to have kids there, knowing that we have an old building, which probably has very old ventilation structure, infrastructure, that it could maybe meet the needs of appropriate ventilation for the students and the staff there? And I really would like to see some type of module, as was mentioned earlier, to explore that a little bit further, especially for the pre-K kids, because they need a little bit more insulation for their teaching, especially being in an integrated preschool, the sensory piece.
Clarification question. When you say module, you mean like a modular classroom?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Can we provide a?
Did you, did you want to say something?
Sure, I'll comment for you. So one of our recommendations would be that the abatement work would happen after hours while there is no children in the school, for starters. While the abatement is going on, there will be background sampling that happens outside of the containment area. The containment area will be under negative air pressure, so it basically, it keeps all of, any fiber that is being removed inside that containment. The reason why we do background air samples outside of the containment and all around the perimeter is to make sure that there is no release of fibers. The IH, the Industrial Hydrogenist that's on scene, is constantly checking the poly, six-mill poly that is put for the containment around the perimeter to make sure there are no breaches. If there's a breach that's noticed, the work immediately, you get stopped until that breach is fixed. So that's basically a quick scenario of how the abatement process would go, but we definitely are recommending that there is no children or any staff members in the building while the abatement is happening.
Okay, thank you, George. Yes?
I'd actually like to start by thanking you, Mr. Waldron, for bringing up the 2017 report. Every single one of you in this room should read the 2017 report. It was published on March 25th and is on your website for all of us to look. And very specifically, I would like to go to page 10 of the 2017 report. You mentioned earlier that there's cross-contamination, that there's no cross-contamination, and that's been confirmed by tests this week. Is that true? Is that not what you said earlier? That's what I was writing down? That you tested for cross-contamination? You tested a number of rooms?
We didn't test anything.
So who tested that, then?
So the school department contracted with EnviroSafe Engineering to come in and test all of the rooms that were within, in the wing that is currently shut down. We also tested a number of rooms outside of that wing that were requested by the Teachers' Association.
On page 10 of that report, it clearly shows that there is a link between asbestos in the 1988 part of the building, which baffles me, given that that was outlawed in the 1970s. So I'm not sure if we had extra tiles that were, that were used in the 1988 building of that, but I think that's something that needs to be looked at. Additionally, with last week's testing, was it air or surface testing?
Surface testing.
And were the windows open? Thank you to the teachers. In addition to that, are we going to have an independent tester come in and test when the windows are closed? Because I know that it was about 2 degrees last week and I wouldn't have opened my windows as a teacher.
So we didn't, so we didn't test last week. We tested this week. We tested on Tuesday. But, but to answer the question, there will be additional air monitoring that is being done and it will be done by Universal Environmental Consultants, which is George's firm, background testing like he explained ahead of time, and then testing throughout any abatement process. We also shared the results with the Department of Labor Standards and Mass DEP, so they are aware of what we got for results and they provided recommendations.
I've been teaching for 20 years and my high bar for education is that students will be independent, lifelong learners. My lowest bar is that I send my students, my children, off to this school and these wonderful teachers and that they are safe in the moment of being curious, succinct, and also respectful. Dr. Girardi, I would like to respectfully ask for your resignation. And a formal apology to every one of these teachers that goes in there every single day. Apologize to them. Apologize to these people. Apologize to our children and respectfully resign. Are you willing to do that, sir?
Okay.
This is not a personal attack. This is simply business. He did not lead. He did not do his job. He had two years to do his job. My superintendent said, and I quote, "I would have had this done in three months." Are you going to resign?
No, I'm not going to resign, no.
Well, I look forward to working with you over the next few years.
Very good, thank you.
And all of you, I hope that you will consider this moment and consider whether or not he did his due diligence in all of this. Thank you for your time. Hopefully that was respectful.
Okay. All right. So certainly in that comment, in the beginning, there was an implication that the testing that was done was not accurate for what? Because the windows were open? I don't know much about testing. And then there was, you know, a lack, an expression of a lack of confidence in you.
Just for the record, what was that gentleman's name? No, I mean, I'm trying to keep notes here. Like, I mean that in all seriousness. Like, what was that gentleman's name?
I didn't get it.
I think if he's not comfortable answering that, that's reasonable.
Hi, my name is Michael E. Worster Jr. That's junior, but don't call me junior. I work for Ashland High School. My superintendent is James Jim Adams. He's fantastic. Yeah, he's great, yeah, yeah. And maybe his wife's here tonight, but he is wonderful and he would have had this done.
Thank you.
I'm willing to take a leave of absence at my job for the next three months and do your job for free for this town, if you're willing to trade. But you're going to have to teach AP European History. That's the catch. So, thank you.
Okay. You're up next.
Okay, I have.
Do you want to say your name?
Oh, Hillary Griffiths. I have a comment and I have a question. My comment is that I think the way we spend money reflects on our priorities and it concerns me that although I understand that the recommendations in the report were recommendations, it concerns me that the teachers, despite showing health issues, their health and the student's health was not seen as a priority. And along those same lines, it bothers me that while there are, other schools have used pods or temporary classrooms, that we don't want to spend the money there, but we're happy to spend the money on legal fees and PR firms and facilitators and things like that. Now, my question is, my guess is that although everybody may be handling this appropriately over the last two weeks, my child hasn't been in Green Meadow for nine months and she's aware that there was leaking ceilings. I was aware that there was mold in asbestos much before two weeks ago and I don't work or go to school there. So I feel like many of the individuals involved with decision-making about asbestos mold, moving ceiling tiles around, replacing ceiling tiles, all of those, I suspect will be facing lawsuits in the future. And so I am concerned that the individuals who need to probably personally protect themselves against liability are the same individuals responsible for doing the remediation and making decisions about releasing information and taking the appropriate steps in the future. I feel like that's a conflict of interest and I don't know that we have a mechanism to have other people in charge of these things. If there are independent people, we can hire to fulfill the superintendent responsibilities as far as this Green Meadow project goes. But I'm concerned that the same individuals can't protect themselves from liability and protect the kids and the teachers.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody want to comment on that concern? No? Well, I'd like to.
Real fast, I had to answer.
Go ahead.
So AHERN requires.
Go up to the mic.
AHERN requires, when an abatement takes place, and you'd probably know this too, a certified asbestos engineer is supposed to be the one coming up with the plans, not school committees, people who are not trained to do that. That's right on the AHERN and it's, I know, I know I'm right. I don't ask questions I don't know the answer to.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, is if you know that.
Well, I believe that's our contractor, though, Erin. Can you clear that up?
Is you a certified asbestos engineer?
Yes, we are. We're a designer.
You are? So why isn't he coming up with a plan? Why have you had any decisions and not him? AHERN requires him to come up with a plan.
I heard him earlier saying they're working on a plan.
I've also heard you say you've made decisions.
We're working on, as far as the instruction, that I'm working with the principals and with the Teachers' Association and Paraprofessionals Association.
He probably should have been called in as soon as the tile fell and he should have been the one making a decision to close up that wing right away. Not you, correct?
Again, we are working together, but he's the one who's making those decisions. I'm making the academic decisions.
Yeah, I assume, I assume he would hire the consultant and then in conjunction with him, figure out what to do.
I know the consultant wasn't there when the stuff was done.
Yeah. All right. Sir, because you've already spoken, I don't know if, I just know a lot of people are waiting.
I waited in line. Actually, she gave me, she let me, she let me cut.
Okay, okay.
It's just I only had three minutes, or actually a little over three minutes. So again, my name is Mike Waldron. I'm the MEA president and I had a couple other points to make. First of all, our gentleman that we had come in to do the air quality test, he is with the National Organization of a Remediation and Mold Inspection. He's a licensed asbestos inspector and when he looked at those ceilings, he said, "The tiles are friable," if I'm using the correct terminology. Okay? So I know you, I know you're saying that they're not. No, no, I didn't say that. I said the EPA lists ceiling tiles as non-friable, but in Massachusetts, under Janet McKenna, we have to put them as friable. Okay, so if they're listed, our inspector also looked at those ceiling tiles when he came in to do the air quality test and he said they are definitely friable and that's why we have a concern that when pieces break off and fall down, we're concerned with people getting sick. Also, I wanted to just let you know that we consulted our MTA Environmental Law Department and according to them, the recommendations made in the 2017 AHERO law are required by law to be followed. They are not, but. Well, then we have, we have a contradiction in, okay? So maybe what I will do is have our MTA legal department consult or speak directly with Dr. Girardi because I have a problem with that contradiction. So I think we, as a, as a group, we need to make sure that we're not, you know, getting wrong communication. So let me just comment further. The reason why they're not a requirement is because a lot of schools, not just this town, don't have the funds available to tackle a lot of the friable asbestos in large quantities. The smaller repairs, yes, I will agree with. And I'm glad you brought that up because in the 2017 AHERO report, the recommendation was that in some of those classrooms, all they had to do was repair about 20 square feet of ceiling tile. That's not a lot. So I think that would have been within the budget and I think that's why that would have been according to the law to have that done. They weren't looking at replacing the whole ceiling back then. So, another thing, just in terms of following up, the DPH report from the Department of Health that was done in 2011, it made certain recommendations that needed to be done in order to remediate the mold issue. I just want to go on file that, you know, we met with the district last year concerning that in the kindergarten classrooms and we pointed out that on that 2011 report, not all of those recommendations were followed. I know you don't have to follow them, at least that's what I'm being told, but I just want people to know that they weren't being followed. But one important thing, I know, I'm going to, I know, I got 45 seconds or 30 seconds to go. I've been talking to Bob and I've been talking to Erin, or at least our consultant has been talking to Erin. In the 2017 AHERO report, there's a section of ceiling tile in the cafeteria hallway that is directly adjacent to the cafeteria. Those ceiling tiles, when the, we have concern that the ceiling tiles themselves might have asbestos in them and we're also concerned that the piping above them might, that we don't know what the asbestos insulation, if there is any, what condition that's in. Erin, they were supposed to be checked out tonight and if they were, do you have any report on those? And I'm concerned that if the report said that those tiles had asbestos, if anybody looks at that section of hallway, all those tiles are old, already cracked, they have holes in them, they're water damaged. So I'm concerned that people are walking back and forth through there and I don't know if any of those individual tiles were indeed tested. So I have a concern for the health and well-being of the kids, especially where everybody walks through that hallway and the kids eat right there.
Can we let Erin and George respond to that, your question?
Yes. So we did, we did look at the tiles tonight. We did not move the tiles because we did not want to disrupt the tiles. Well, there's, there's still people in the building when we looked at the tiles. George did look at the tiles and we are working with George, the school department's working with George to develop a possible abatement plan for that area as well. And he can give his comments.
So, so, so did you actually, did you actually, we were told, I was told, that while this meeting was going on, you were going to have a certified trained personnel go there, move the tile and look above the tile, take a flashlight, check what was up above to make sure that if there's any insulation around those, that piping, that it's all still encapsulated intact. Was that done?
We looked, we looked at the tiles. We did not move the tiles and look above the tiles.
So you did not look above the tiles?
Not, not tonight, correct.
So right now, we have no idea what the, the status of a potential asbestos above there and you didn't want to move the tiles because they're too friable? It's just, it's a concern of mine. I've, I've had discussions with, with Dr. Girardi about this, so I just want to put that forward, just so you guys know that.
Thank you. George, before we go to the next person, his concern, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, was, are you familiar with the area he's talking about and, and do you think he is warranted in having concerns about the safety of kids walking underneath that area?
I am not familiar with that area.
Oh, okay.
I walked, generally walked through that wing to see the condition of the ceiling tiles in general. And that was one of the first things I brought up, the conditions are, you know, need, need, immediate attention. So that's what we're working on right now, is a plan to try to abate that area and get them repaired.
So, so it does make sense to do something quickly in that area?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, I think you're next.
Now, that does not mean there's a breach of fibers by any stretch of the imagination. What I'm saying to you is the ceiling tiles are damaged, but in order for fibers to be released, they have to be, you know, touched, broken, manhandled. So if they're left intact and nobody touches anything, the chances of a fiber being released are very small.
Water dripping through them. What about all the water dripping through them? Who's handling them?
All right. Well, unfortunately, if you want to comment, you should get in line, I think. George, what percentage of schools have those tiles in them in Massachusetts? Do most schools have tiles like that?
I would probably tell you 60, 70% of schools have.
Have these same tiles?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ann Alexopoulos. I have a child in first grade in Miss Boardman's classroom. First, I wanted to say thank you to the teachers. A couple weeks ago, we had an issue at Green Meadow that was taken care of. The kids were evacuated. Lots of moms got lots of texts, and I want my teachers to know that I was very confident that you would take care of my child and that they would be safe. So I wanted to say thank you.[677.12][677.12](APPLAUSE) Second, George, I have a question for you. You keep on saying that there's other reasons why you might feel uncomfortable having your child in the school, and that you're addressing those with Mr. Girardi or Dr. Girardi. I want to know what those issues are that you keep on saying, like there's things that need to be addressed right away? You keep on...
So I never said I would feel uncomfortable for my child to be in the school at all.
Okay.
What I said was there are items in that school that after walking through that school today, and this was my first time walking through that wing, that those areas need to be addressed. There are a lot of broken ceiling tiles or missing tiles or tiles that are hanging. Those are items that definitely need to be addressed, because they can be disturbed at any time. There could be vibration in the building that could cause them to fall, and that was part of the plan that we're trying to develop now, is to get those areas remediated quickly.
George, I think it might be helpful, I know it would be helpful for me, if you just speak to what part of the school you're talking about? Because I think you're talking about the wing we've closed.
That's correct.
But I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
That's what I'm addressing.
Because I know there's different things we're looking at.
So there's other than the wing that's closed? There's no other concerns?
I did not walk the remainder of the building, so I couldn't answer.
So did you walk, did you walk the, they just said the cafeteria hall?
We walked around the building. We came for the loop, and then the cafeteria was the 204, so we ran a...
Right, but we didn't, yeah, I walked through various spots. Walking through the building, we walked through various spots, but I by no means went through the entire building, no.
Okay. So I think that brings, I guess, another issue, because they just addressed the cafeteria issue, and that your company is going to be taking care of that.
So we have to do an extensive inspection so we can actually design a plan.
Pull the mic slightly closer, George.
We have to do an extensive inspection so we can design a plan to do a full remedial, or put a bid out for a full remediation of that.
Okay, and so...
Can I walk through the vibration with that hallway?
Again, I can't, I really can't answer your question unless I walk through that. I'll be more than happy to do that after.
So we did...
As far as what I've seen, there is no health hazard.
So...
As far as what I've seen, there is no health hazard.
Just a quick comment. When we walked through the building, did not have a floor plan in hand and describe every room and room number. We didn't walk into every single classroom, like in the newer wing. We did walk through the cafeteria area, which, it didn't say, George, this is the cafeteria area, but we did walk through that cafeteria area, the tiles that Mike Waldron had referenced. We did look at those tiles, they were above head. We did assess the condition. We did observe the condition. Like George said, there are some damaged ones, but out of all the tiles that went through the building, we're looking around, none of them were in the condition where it would pose an immediate health risk to anybody that's actively in the building.
And that's just on the side of it?
And we walked, we walked the corridor. So we walked the corridor, we walked into the classrooms in the wing that shut down, but we did not walk into every single other classroom, like the ones through the backside of the 1988. We didn't walk into every single one of those classrooms. We walked the entire corridor, and we walked into the, through the cafeteria, and into the gymnasium, and down that hallway that's closed.
Okay. Well, let's go back to, I'm sorry, you don't get your name, but...
So in the press releases over the weekend, it was said that air purifiers would be brought in. My daughter has significant respiratory issues, and although I can't say that in kindergarten her respiratory issues were worse than in preschool, which they weren't, they were a lot worse in preschool, so I can't relate it to anything regarding the school, I would like my daughter to have an air purifier because of her documented respiratory issues. And because I haven't pursued this with her 504, because I read the press release saying that this is something that was going to be handled, do we have a timeline on that? Should I call a 504 meeting? I just feel, I feel like it needs to be addressed because of my daughter's specific respiratory concerns.
So one of the meetings that we met with the MEA, in one of the reports, it was recommended that any teachers who brought in a note, we would put air purifiers. Those, and when we got that report, it was just before Christmas vacation, and we ordered those, but there was questions, we had to, there was several recommendations, there was questions about the electrical capacity. Turns out that all worked out. We ordered those. We've already installed one of the four that were ordered. Because the shutdown over the last week has been considered, the other ones were planned to go in the old position, so the old wing, so they're not going to go in there anymore. We're going to wait and see what the plan that the principal and teachers have worked on as to where those classrooms are going, so we can put them in the rooms with the teachers. In addition to that, at that meeting with the MEA, I suggested that we would buy air purifiers for every room, because as I'm learning about from the DPH, that airflow will also help with some of the mold concerns. I just felt for the same reason that you did, that there's probably a lot of students that would benefit, so not just doing it for teachers with doctor's notes, but for doing it for every classroom is what I committed to in the meeting, in the last meeting we had with the MEA.
And is there a timeline for that?
So there isn't a timeline for that. In talking to the DPH, they actually questioned which purifiers, and I'm asking for them for recommendations, but we're trying to get the best products we can and get them into the rooms.
Okay.
So we are, we are working on that.
Thank you. Okay, so you're next.
My name is Karen Ditto. I'm an occupational therapist in the Green Meadow School and elsewhere. And I let Mike come up to ask the question, because he had several other questions, but I want to return to the cafeteria hallway. You made it sound like you had walked through the cafeteria hallway, and it is not a problem. There are cracked, wet tiles, there are holes in those tiles, and there is a two-inch gap between a tile and the support. How can you say that you have no concerns about dust that may be potentially asbestos dust, because you haven't checked the insulation up there? How can you tell us that there's no concern in that hallway? I have pictures that show the gap. I have pictures that show the cracked tiles, the holes in the tiles, the wet and damaged tiles. And you say that there's been no disturbance, this is a separate issue from the hallway. I would like to hear about the hallway, but you said there's been no disturbance to tiles. We have had floods in that building so severe that tiles are buckling, and the custodians have poked a hole through the tiles to let that water drain out. How is that not disturbing what is above those tiles?
Are you addressing me or Aaron?
I'm addressing both of you.
Okay, because I, I no time walked through that area. I was focused on the wing that was shut down.
When you responded to Mike, you made it sound like you had looked through that area.
Never said that.
Karen, Karen, if I can, Karen, if I can just say, I felt like he was speaking, like that's exactly why I asked him to clarify, because I felt that too.
I was addressing the closed-down wing, that's what I came here for.
Fine, then let's address it to Aaron, because you're still telling us that that is safe, and there is a two-inch gap between a ceiling tile and the next tile over or the support.
I'll be more than happy to go back there after this meeting and look at it with him. I have no objection to that, but I did not look at that. I was focused on the wing that was closed.
But clearly what you're saying is, it seems like you feel very concerned that that is not safe, that that area is not safe.
I am very concerned. I have been concerned. I've been working through the system. I feel like I'm not being heard. I'm told in meetings that I am being heard, but I'm not seeing the results of this. I am asking for documentation on behalf of the MEA, and I don't get a response. Never mind getting the documents, I don't get a response.[1172.75][1172.75](APPLAUSE) I have been very calm. It is hard to remain calm, listening to these answers and knowing what is going on.
Again, I'm very sympathetic to your concerns, and I'll be more than happy to go there right after this and evaluate it, and if there is an issue, it'll be addressed to Aaron immediately.
And when are we going to hear about it? We got a summary from the testing earlier this week. We did not get lab results.
So I have those lab results. We can share those.
Why were they not shared with us earlier when we got the summary? Did you not get them together?
I got them, I did get them separately.
How far apart?
I got the summary probably seven, eight, seven to eight o'clock this morning, and I got the lab results around 10, 10:30.
I didn't get the summary until mid-afternoon. I have not seen the lab results. The MEA has been trying to work very collaboratively with you.
So I can, I can have...
Why would you not send us documents when we ask for them, or immediately when you get them, if we're working collaboratively?
So I send the documents to the...[1247.12][1247.12](APPLAUSE)
Let's, let's let Aaron finish. He's in the middle of talking.
So I send the documents to the school department, and the school department can send them to the, I have all the documents that I've shared, I go through the system. I follow the chain of command. I don't send them directly.
I understand that. So not you then? It goes to Dr. Girardi? What time does it get to you, and why does it take so long to get to us?
You can look at the email, but probably within 15 minutes to half an hour when I got it, within that timeframe, I forwarded it to you.
So Aaron, you got it at 7:00 in the morning, and it took that long for it to get to Bob? You got it at 10:00 in the morning, and we still haven't gotten the lab results?
I can't speak to, so can you clarify your question?
So clearly your concern is that they're not sharing things quickly and as openly as you would like.
So when I received the results, right, I don't want to, I did my due diligence by contacting our consultants.
I understand that. I saw that in the email.
Professional opinion, right, before I shared that information. I'm not an asbestos expert, right? I rely on the experts.
Yes, we have an asbestos expert, an asbestos expert who we wanted to look at those materials.
And I offered up time to meet with him, and I told him I'd call him, and I did call him, and I did speak with him, and I told him that I had expressed caution that I did not want to disturb a tile, and I included that in an email. I believe I included the Teachers Association in the email.
You don't want to disturb the tiles, but there's a two-inch gap.
Understood, but that's why I want to rely on our consultants and our experts. I don't want to create another hazard if there's not...
Okay. We're over your time, Karen, but you had said you wanted George to check that particular area. George said you're going to do it tonight.
Absolutely.
And then just giving this...
Right after this meeting.
Absolutely, and I can give you, I can call you personally if you'd like.
I will be there.
Okay.[1363.12][1363.12](APPLAUSE)
Okay. By the way, I don't know what it's called, point of order, we're over the half an hour. Do you need to do anything on your...
Motion to extend? All in favor?
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Richard.
Hi, my name's Janine Maddow, was my maiden name. I've grown up in this town. I returned here to raise my family. My married name is Lawless. I have a first grader and a future kindergartner. Setting aside the asbestos issue with the high hopes that it will be handled appropriately, I'd like to circle back around to the mold issue that we know is not contained to that wing. So when the asbestos is remediated and tiles are replaced, assuming that the mold will be addressed at the same time, what happens to the mold that has already been tested in other areas of the building, and all the other areas of the building that were never tested for mold? Can you address, please, the, what you're going to do about that?
So I know that we talked to the MEA about doing, installing the air purifiers, because that's one of the recommendations to improve the airflow. We also talked to them about changing the types of filters on the Univent systems and some other improvements before we would do remediation testing, post-remediation testing. But I know we talked about doing that. That's part of the process for the whole building.
Okay. So talking about it is not actually doing?
Well, you have to, again, we are, I explained, we ordered some air purifiers based on the recommendation to just put them in rooms where teachers had doctor's notes. After talking, I suggested that we would probably have a lot of parents who would like them in the rooms, so we're now going to order more for every room, air purifiers.
Okay, so there's no current plans to test the rest of the school for mold?
That, that's what we were talking about, was once we implement some of these recommendations, then we would bring in consultants to test the rest of the building for mold.
So until those things that are just being discussed now are potentially implemented, some weeks and months in the future, then you'll test again?
Some of the things have already been implemented, based on the reports that we got from the DPH, and there's more important, I guess, recommendations like the air purifiers that should significantly improve the situation, so it would make sense to implement those before you do the post-remediation testing. So that's the process we're working on collaboratively with the MEA.
Okay, so in the meantime, we may or may not have mold throughout the whole rest of the building, and we don't know, and we're not doing anything about it, and we're dealing with the asbestos, and assuming that the asbestos won't go past that wing, and there's no way to know whether our children are exposed to high levels of mold, as in that classroom, as in the staff development room, the seniorities room, how do we know?
So the DPH had, as I explained earlier, the DPH suggests that you don't do any more mold testing. They suggest that mold testing is relative, and it is subjective, because there is no air standard or air quality for mold. And so because of that, what one person who tests it may say something is high, another one may say it's low. So the bottom line is, the DPH, who is the highest authority to advise governmental buildings, had suggested we didn't even do those tests. We did them out of an abundance of caution. They did show that there is, I'm sorry, but we did, and we did it so that we could try to get a handle on what else we can do to improve. And again, we got more recommendations, and we implemented some, and we're implementing even more.
Okay. I think that I speak for other parents when we say that no level of mold is acceptable to us.[1617.62][1617.62](APPLAUSE)
Okay. You know, there's a bit of a conundrum there, right? Because there seems to be no standard regarding what is, no commonly accepted standard on what's safe or not safe? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the DPH told me that the very same mold in the building is the mold that people would be exposed to when they walk from their car to the building, that it's naturally occurring outside, and that when there is leaks, there may be areas where you would want to make sure that those leaks are fixed, ceiling tiles are repaired, so that you could make sure no mold was growing inside, but that it's naturally occurring everywhere. So right now, there is probably mold all around us, is what I'm told by the DPH. And a lot of us, myself included, I've had allergies since I was a child, too mold, too tree pollens and those sort of things. The DPH reported to me just the other day that we've had an unusual winter, we had an unusual summer, both of which would actually make those of us who are sufferers of mold allergies, would make it harder. And I know myself, I've been very congested for what seems like over a year. So there is mold everywhere, and then the DPH did say that the reports are subjective, that their analysis is what we should go by, their recommendations are what we should go by, which were the first ones, the very first ones we did voluntarily. In addition to that, we still did the other two, and we are implementing recommendations based on the other two as well, because we want to go above and beyond, because we do care about the staff and the students.
Yeah, it clearly just makes it hard for parents like Janine and others, where there is no standard, you know?
Right.
So you don't know what is safe, you know, what does safe mean?
We're in the same position, though. It makes it hard for us too, because there's no standard. So we're in the same position with the parents.
Hi, Lydia Clancy. I have a daughter in Fowler, but she did go through the Green Meadow School. She was in Mrs. Krasinski's class in kindergarten, and I personally have helped Katie Krasinski gather buckets and place them in her room to catch the rain coming through the tiles. And trying to keep kindergartners out of buckets of water is not easy. So I have a statement. As a candidate for school committee, I've been contacted by dozens of families who are outraged by the misrepresentation of facts, dismissive responses to inquiries, and at outraged by the misrepresentation of facts, dismissive responses to inquiries, and at times outright denial of truths by the superintendent regarding the testing, presence, and handling of friable asbestos-containing materials and high levels of mold in the Green Meadow building. Unfortunately, this manner of conducting business is not exclusive to these instances. There has been a pattern of non-disclosure and lack of transparency for years. And now we are becoming aware of what we consider to be the superintendent's gross negligence and blatant disregard for the health and safety of our children, their teachers in paras, and the staff at Green Meadow. At this point, there is a pervading sense of distrust and lack of confidence in the superintendent's ability to responsibly, respectfully, and effectively serve in the best interest of our children and schools. Therefore, I do not see how we can move forward with Dr. Girardi as the superintendent of our district.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody want to respond to that? No? Okay.
My name is Stephanie Johnson and I have a kindergartner in the wing that was shut down. And my only question is, um, what's the plan for the rest of the year for the kids? How are we going to get them back in a safe learning environment? Um, I know that you might not have that exact answer right now. And if you don't, um, when will we hear that communication? How will that be communicated to us?
So, um, as I said, the principal was working with the teachers, kindergarten and the preschool. And the, uh, we actually worked with the whole MEA and met with them one morning to talk about possible plans as to where people could be relocated. Uh, we were waiting for this report because if the report said that we had to shut the building down immediately, that would have been one of the options. If the reports said that we had to shut the, you know, shut the whole building down, that would have been one of the options. We were waiting to get the data that we got today. Um, that data appears that we should still stay in the building. So the principal will be working over the next day or so with the staff to figure out the relocation plans and the principal will email those plans to the parents.
So by next week, do you think they'll be back enough? Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. The data that we received, yes, tonight.
Okay. Hi, my name is Tiffany. I have a kindergartner at Green Meadow. Um, I have a few questions. Which three areas outside of the closed wing tested positive for asbestos specifically?
Those areas with the gymnasium, classroom 7J and classroom 3B. 7J is located within the area that's currently closed.
And Excel is in the gymnasium. And my daughter has been housed in mainly the cafeteria and the gymnasium all week now. I hope you can see why that's very concerning to me.
So the amount, the amount that was found was a less than 1%, which, um, George can speak to that. We have worked with, um, George and his company, uh, and as well as the Department of Labor Standards and Mass DEP today. They put together an action plan. And like I said, we have a licensed asbestos abatement contractor in the building right now cleaning those rooms, um, the gymnasium and 3B, um, to the approved plan that's set forth by.
When you say the amount, you mean the amount of asbestos is less than whatever, .01% or whatever it is? Is that what you're saying, Aaron?
The amount, the amount on the report says.
Less than one, not .01, right?
Less than 1%.
Less than 1%.
Right. And kids are little. Environmental toxins affects them much greater than they would affect myself or another adult. They have little bodies. They're affected at a much greater rate. So that's not really a comfort to me. What was the level in the kindergarten wing and the preschool wing?
So everywhere else in the school, all other 31, so 34 samples were taken. All other 31 samples were negative.
So there was no asbestos in the shutdown wing?
Zero. Well, there was one room, 7J. So three rooms tested positive for less than 1%. The gymnasium, 7J, which is located in the wing that's currently shut down.
Okay.
And 3B.
Okay. And my next question, I want to clarify, is not meant to rile anyone up. It's me as a concerned parent hearing different answers from people sitting up there. Can I put my daughter on the bus tomorrow and give her a kiss and send her to a safe place? I've heard yes, I've heard no. What's the answer? I'm not trying to rile you up. I'm trying to do what's best for my daughter.
So we've asked. I believe, I believe the question was asked of our consultant and he said he would do that for his own job.
But he also said he couldn't tell us it was safe. He could only tell us it wasn't a public health hazard. That is not an answer.
Well, well, so let, let, hold on. Let's, let's let them answer. The, the question is obviously a legitimate concern. These parents are concerned. Can my, can I send my kid to school tomorrow? What is, is there an answer that they can?
I, I would. And I would ask for the questions that have been asked and ask for the data just like you're doing. And I would want to know what's going on. But until I knew that there was definitely something that was harming my child, I would send the child, my child to the school.
No. Well, that's, um, so, so.
And I.
So you're saying, yes, you feel it's safe to send your kids to school?
Yes.
And is there, are there any other comments?
And even though they're saying now that our children don't go to the school, the question was asked about, you know, asked from our consultant, would you send your child to the school? He said yes. Now it's asked of me. I would say yes.
He also cannot tell us definitively that it is safe. We have gotten non-answer. It's a circular answer. And I want a clear answer before I send my daughter on the bus tomorrow. That's not too much to ask.
George, is that a, is that an accurate characterization of your response that it's not definitively safe?
So again, after 24 hours of reviewing this data, I can, I can honestly say that, looking you in the eyes, and I have two children myself, that I would send my children to that school.
Is it safe for my daughter to be in that school?
It would be safe for your children to be in that school, yes. Okay. From the data that I have reviewed over the last 24 hours.
What about the cafeteria now? It sounds like that's a new concern.
Again, I have, I haven't looked at that. So I have to make that determination.
Okay.
Well, we, we just, we.
So we did do.
Again, so earlier I, I mentioned that I, my concentration was on the wing that was closed. Had I known about those other areas, I would have been more than happy to do that.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let, let him, let him speak.
I mean, those are all my, those are all my questions. And I just.
So I'm just curious. I'm sorry. Lee, is that your, I didn't get your name?
Tiffany.
Do you feel satisfied? How do you feel?
No, I feel like I'm still getting a mixed answer.
Tiffany, after I review that this evening with Aaron, I'm going to give him an honest opinion. If I feel that it is an unsafe condition, I'm going to tell him it's an unsafe condition.
And when will, and when will the parents get that information?
So I, I just want. I didn't hear that last question.
Hold on, hold on.
Aaron's trying to answer.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I do have, so we did do a sample in the cafeteria and that came back zero for asbestos. In the cafeteria. And I can share that data with anybody who wants it. We did do a sample in the cafeteria. It came back zero for asbestos. I, we didn't do mold testing. This is the, this is the test. So we did mold testing previously back in like October. But on Tuesday, when we did the sampling, we did 34 locations throughout the school. One of the locations clearly listed on here is the cafeteria hallway. Zero for asbestos.
All right. So, uh, I, I think we should move on.
I don't have any more questions.
Okay. So basically what they're saying in response to your question is George is saying, A, he would send his kids there. Aaron's saying that the test in the cafeteria came up negative with nothing. And George is saying you're going to go there tonight and you're going to make your determin, another determination.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
And actually, can I add to that? If, if George goes there tonight and notifies me that I need to close school tomorrow morning, I would close school tomorrow morning. That's what I would do. That's like a snow day. Whenever I get information that there's a safety issue, I would close school. I usually try to do it before 6:00 AM. And that's considering the time of tonight, that's probably the timeline that that decision would be made.
Okay. You want to say something else?
You want us to move over?
Okay. How are we doing on stamina? Keep going? You want to keep going? What, what do you think?
So, I mean, there was, there was a question that was just called from the room. And it's, it's a viable question. Do we, as a community, want the two experts to walk over there right now and inspect the space? So let me, let me be very clear with that, though. I will adjourn the meeting and then, excuse me, I don't in good conscience want to leave a meeting open without my two experts sitting at the table. Okay. So like, let's be very clear. If we continue the meeting and it is now approaching half past nine, they're going to go over, they're going to inspect, which means new information's going to come out late, which may or may not make people happy. So I, I am in this moment trying to get a sense of what people want us to do because there's mixed messages that are being shared in this space right now.
All right. Well, let's just, let's just have just a quick show of hands. Raise your hand if you'd like to immediately have them go to the school and, and assess.
So, so here's, actually, I have a better option. Like in the, in, in, in consideration of the time, it's 20 after nine. We could put a hard deadline of 10 o'clock on this meeting. I adjourn this meeting, please let me finish. I adjourn this meeting at 10 o'clock. Our experts go over, they will have a decision, and then an email or some sort of a communication will follow whether school is open at the Green Meadow tomorrow. So, I mean, again, I'm getting nods and I'm getting my head shakes when I'm staring at the crowd. So.
You might have to, you might have to make a decision.
Richard, do you, do you mind facilitating some sort of a vote here? Like?
Okay, sure. Well, uh, I don't know if I will actually count, but how many people agree with Justin's proposal that we go for no more than another 40 minutes of hearing comments and then George and Aaron go to the school and do what they need to do in order to assess their? Okay, that seems like a majority. That seems like a majority.
Okay.
Okay. Yes? You mean their, their answers? Yes. Okay. So is that okay? That seems like what the majority wants if that's how you want to make the decision.
So let, let's take a couple more questions because I, I see lots of people standing here in the line. I will adjourn the meeting at half past nine. Okay. So excuse me. All right. I was having conversation up here while decisions were being made. Then I will adjourn the meeting at 10 o'clock. That, that gives us 38 minutes. We will try to be brief. We will try to get as many questions answered as humanly possible. At 10 o'clock, we will adjourn the meeting. Our two professionals will go over there. There will be communication to follow. Is that, is that what we all agreed on? All right, then let's do this. Next up in line, please.
Yeah. And I would urge the people in line to, um, you know, share new things. If, if it's not new, then, you know, if it's already been said, don't say it.
Representative would like to speak?
Oh, yes.
Excuse me, I'll be very, very brief. Uh, thank you everyone tonight for coming here, for this discussion. I think everyone has a lot to say. There are multiple questions. This is complex. I would respectfully ask that there is another meeting where a plan is talked about and where we're able to ask those questions related to the plan and then be able to move forward and understand where we're going, looking in a calendar and understanding from what's happening tonight. I think that this meeting needed to happen, but it was my understanding that we would come out of here with a plan. I don't think people are ready to have a plan. But I think that having to answer questions in multiple ways because there isn't the information here necessary, I think there needs to be more work done in order to answer everybody's questions and answer them to the point where people feel safe sending their children to the Green Meadow School. So I just respectfully ask that we consider another meeting in which a plan is put forward based on what's going to happen in a half an hour and then based on what's going to happen in the next week and then moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Katie.
Okay. I think you're next.
Thank you. I'm Katie Hannon. I have a son in the classroom where the most recent tile fell. I understand, not the, the first. My question was also about the plan. So thank you, Kate Hogan, for bringing that up. I think it's kind of shocking that it's Thursday night. Tomorrow is an early release day and we have no information about what's happening next week or after vacation. There's been no talk of where these kindergartners and preschoolers are going to go, at least not to the parents. I'm a teacher myself and being a teacher without a space and supplies is, I can't even imagine how you've made it through the week. I just, I wish there was more communication. I wish there was a plan. I don't know how you're going to do it, but I would hope that there is one in the next few days. Also, if the plan is for the kindergartners to be in that cafeteria for that whole week again, I hope you look at that space that they're talking about and is it safe for them to be sitting in the cafeteria all day in a space that is of a concern to the teachers? And also for the other kids that eat there and are in and out of that space all day. Can I ask a question to the teachers? Do you feel safe being there every day? If you had a kid, would you feel safe sending your kids there every day?
Okay. Thank you. You know, we're, we're at this kind of nexus between where, where, how one, how does one determine whether it's safe? You know, and I think, and the one hand you can say, do I feel safe? On the other hand, you know, we're trying to figure out what, what does safety mean? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jessica Crafting. I have a future kindergartner in a year. Um, I spoke with you, Aaron, on the phone yesterday. You were helpful. Thank you. Um, I have a, like, I, I appreciate everybody kind of went towards the, the plan thing. I feel bad I'm going back because I've been standing here a little bit. I'm going back to kind of some of the asbestos specific stuff that's happened in the past to clarify. So I'm specifically asking you to, the two experts on October 4th in the official, and respectfully, I see you guys are taking notes. If you wouldn't mind, like, letting me just get out my questions and then you can respond possibly? That would be helpful. And 10/4, you replaced tiles. You listed a whole bunch of places, but specifically in the pre-K, K-Hall, which in the 2000 report, 2017 report, the two-by-fours suspended acousting ceiling tiles were already previously found to be tested for asbestos and positive. So, and there was at least 25 square feet, but it's a homogeneous region, right? So that might be more than that. I don't know where they were replaced. You said they were replaced. Can you provide documentation for which part? Did you test it? Is there, um, was there asbestos remediation? You said you hadn't done any. Is that a concern for you that they replaced something in an area that homogeneously was found to be tested positive for asbestos previously? The cafeteria hallway, same thing. And as teachers have noticed before in any of those places, it's, their, their tiles have fallen down. I haven't obviously experienced it. I don't have a kindergartner yet. have a kindergartner yet, but it's noted that in the O and M plan, that A, should asbestos contained building material become damaged, seal and isolate the area and notify the consultant, which you guys did on the 25th, but I don't know where the communication broke down between when teachers had ceiling tiles fall. I'm assuming they told the principal or whoever, the principal not inform Dr. Girardi, did Dr., did they not inform DPW? Because all of that whole wing has a homogeneous regions of asbestos positive, already tested positive asbestos tiles, okay? Secondly, periodic cleaning, it's noted in here that custodial staff should perform, this is in your O and M plan, a thorough cleaning of a minimum of once every three months where the asbestos ceiling tiles are found. HEPA, or every say it, vacuum or steam clean all the carpets, mop, wet mop all the floors, I mean, wet mop all the floors, but I'm kind of concerned that, do we have a HEPA vacuum in there? Do they do that in all those rooms, right? That would be useful to see. Next on that list is if an emergency occurs, immediately notify the LEA, the Local Education Agency, and restrict access to the area. Common emergencies include pipe leaks, boiler breakdowns, and water damage. So, we've all noted, there's water damage in all these ceiling tiles in the asbestos building materials. Does that not qualify as emergency? Can you specify what maybe they meant in the O and M plan by water damage, if it wasn't what has already been happening? And then, so, and then also in, you know, shoot, sorry, something about equipment, that was pretty much most of my questions. I mean, I can go through, like, there's a bunch of other stuff, but, oh, the, sorry, the tiles that were missing that you replaced, and Erin specifically told me on the phone yesterday, that they made sure when they replaced those eight ceiling tiles in all the seven classrooms, that they made sure they didn't disturb the asbestos, totally fine, but why were they missing? When did they fall? If they fell, their asbestos tiles, did we clean them up properly? Did the custodial staff clean them up properly? Did the teachers clean them up? Because now it's too late to test those tiles, they're gone, nobody knows how long. Did the teachers have a potential exposure?
Okay, that's a lot of questions. Let's see how they do and respond.
I know, well, I took a lot of notes, it was good.
So, the first question, about replacing ceiling tiles, you just mentioned it there at the end, where we replaced previously vacancy in tiles, we didn't remove any asbestos containing material ceiling tiles.
Right, so the ones that were gone, you replaced, but why were they gone? Where'd they go? They didn't just vanish into thin air?
Sorry. So, I can't speak to the historically gone ones that have been removed, I can't answer that question.
Okay.
So, those previous. Second question, all of our vacuums equipped with HEPA filters, so that is done, wet mopping is done, and O and M plan, oh, can you address the O and M plan?
Sure, what I can address is your question about when our inspectors go through and put on the AHRER.
So, specifically, if there's a damage that you're supposed to seal, isolate the area, I mean, actually, I'll leave that to them, but how about the water damage? Like, when it says an emergency procedure, if an asbestos, a previously tested positive asbestos tile has water damage, that seems to be in this, an emergency.
So, if it was noted on the AHRER report, that it was at that point damaged, friable or whatnot, we usually give a specified of our square footage or whatever, and then we give that recommended date to be removed, and after that, that goes to the town and the school department, the LEA takes over.
What if it's damaged after the fact?
That's where the, you have your six-month surveillance, your 12-month surveillance, your 18-month surveillance, and the LEA designees, the one that walks around and basically notes that, and if there's something that's of immediate attention, has to react.
Okay. And what about the replacing of the tiles in the pre-K hallway?
This should be your last question.
That was the first, my first question, the pre-K hallway tiles.
So, that was similar to what we discussed on the phone, where we replaced them with non-asbestos.
But you took some out, or you added?
We didn't take any out.
You didn't take any out in the pre-K hallway? It was replaced as and added to an empty hole?
Correct. That was recommended in the original DPH report, that we fill in the gaps in the ceiling.
Right, but they, they're not able to say stuff about asbestos, so they wouldn't have, they never commented in the DPH report about asbestos, so.
Correct.
Well, that's what we don't know, they were missing.
I can't speak to who removed, I don't know, they've been there, gone for a long time, so.
Three square, bigger feet or more, require a licensed contractor, and they should have not attempt, which a company like Doorlows or State, State has no record, anything of that, to be met. So, if someone removed them and exposed our kids, what was the ruling?
Yeah. He's just saying, in the past, it seems like people have removed things without doing it the proper way, and potentially exposed kids to asbestos.
And if Dr. Girardi wants to quickly answer the one about, like, where does it break down if a tile falls in a teacher's classroom, they assume, report to the principal?
They fill out a form that goes to the principal, and the principal forwards it to the facilities, Assistant Facilities Director.
Okay.
All right, we should, we should, because we're going to run out of time, we should go to the next person. Thank you.
That's the process.
Go ahead.
Hi, Dave Crager. I have three children, they've gone through Green Meadow, I've spoken to this group, actually, as well, at the meeting a couple of days back. Clearly, as I'm listening to everybody here, there's a lot of concern about communication, what happened in the past, what happened, when it happened, when it turns fire, et cetera, et cetera. One of the things that we're not talking about is actually the root cause why the repairs weren't done a couple of years ago, and it was actually alluded to, the fact that it wasn't in the budget. We work within the budget. We control the budget. We own the budget. $200,000 on a budget managed by the town of Maynard, it's not that much. Anybody in the school committee, school government, can actually go in front of the board and say, look, we need an override, we need $200,000 more dollars. What's $200,000, what, $20 each in all of our property taxes? Are we going to say no to that? I don't think so, right? So, what I'd like to hear is, earlier today, it was talked about that this Saturday, we're going to have insight into the budget for next year. I'm actually interested in seeing that budget, but I really would like to see a supplemental budget that said, imagine that Green Meadow was simply not safe, because we have a lot of people that think it's not safe, right? And there's a moment of notice where you take a sample, and next week it might be different. Imagine it's not safe. What does it cost for us to take out all asbestos tiles, all asbestos, fix the roof, give us a price? I can get a couple of contracts come out there, right, and say, what does it cost to replace the roof, and et cetera, et cetera, right? You can probably tell us what it costs to remove all the asbestos containing materials, and then add on where do we place the kids. I think in a prior school meeting was said, well, look, if we need to place the school down, we can take our kids and put them in a fowler, or in high school, or run two shifts. Let's assume that needs to happen. One dollar amount is needed, and let's do an override, guys, let's just do an override, right, for the coming year. Pay some more property taxes, I don't like paying it, but by gosh, are we going to fight over some taxes, that we have to pay a little more taxes, just to make sure the kids are safe? We can't undo what's been done, but we can certainly control the dollars that we put forward as a town to fix this issue, and by the way, Kate, thank you for being here, and tap into state funding. We all want a new Green Meadow school, but my understanding is that's not happening this year or next year. So, we all want to have a safe school in between, and I think this room will only get it if we feel all the asbestos and leaks causing issues are just taken out, resolved. What does it take? Can we see a plan? And let's ask, let's, we'll ask you to ask for our support to fund it, but we need your help, we need to get the ask. If you can create the ask, put a dollar amount on the table, we will support it. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you. I have a, excuse me.
Hi, my name's Jessica Jarmelos.
Hold on, you want to, you want to say something?
Erin was just crunching numbers on that question, do you mind if I get some ballpark number?
Sorry, thank you. So, quick answer, according to the AHRER report, the cost estimates for asbestos abatement is $354,500. We currently have a quote on the table for a roof replacement of that section of the building of $1.9 million, for a total cost of $2.25 million. No, that's just for asbestos abatement and roof replacement, not to build a new school.
Okay. All right, so, go ahead. Yeah.
So, probably another $100,000 for drop ceilings.
The question was, does it include putting in drop ceiling? And it didn't, and it didn't.
2.35 million. That's a rough estimate, that's just me doing some math up here right now.
Probably double sessions, yes.
Yeah, we would have to impact bargain with the association, what a solution would be, and we've actually talked about worst-case scenarios. Would it be double sessions? I know Mr. Walden remembered, years ago, that happened here in Maynard, or would it be kids go on school on weekends, and, you know, there's options that the, we would work with the association to discuss, if we, if we felt we need to close that, down that building, and it has been talked about, it just hasn't been acted on, because we've been needing data, and we've been trying to come up with a plan. So, just so you know, it has been talked about, it has been thought about, and it is an option, but we're still trying to collect the data. I'm sorry.
I'm terribly sorry for interrupting you, but Erin, Erin had an answer, and I wanted to try to get it out to the room.
No problem.
Okay, can, please continue.
Okay, thanks. My name's Jessica Jarmelos, I have three kids in the elementary school, preschool, kindergarten, and first grade. Oh, sorry. So, I guess my, I have a couple of different things. I want to reiterate the fact of the gym, in case the school is safe to go there. I have two little kids that are in the wing that is closed, and for them to be in the gym, I feel like it's too loud. What about gym class? I feel like that's really important, the kids don't have enough time to move anyways. My, two of my kids are on IEPs, and one is ADHD, and has breaks, and is allowed to move around more frequently. And my other child is in preschool, he has IEP, and he's in speech and language, and hasn't gotten this, this week, so, again, another concern there. And I know I'm saying this again, but the air purifiers, I feel like they were promised back in October, when my kindergarten's class was moved, and there was health issues in that class, and they weren't given, she finally got one last week, after I bought one, so. Anyways, I just want to make sure everybody gets an air purifier. And another question is, you know, what is your take on a new school? And, you know, somebody else was asking, you know, what does that cost to you, and what do you think that, that would look like if we did get a new school?
So, I mentioned earlier, the most, sorry, I mentioned earlier that the most recent plan would be, there's a divider in the gym, so to divide it in half, and probably not have the preschool in that area, that's the most recent thinking that the principal's been working on, with the preschool teachers and everybody else. That's the latest thought. Regarding a new building, as I said, we put in the application, I'm not sure what the cost would be, but we are putting in the grant again for an MSBA, the state, to help us build a new building. That's usually a five to seven-year process, so if our grant's accepted this year, it would still take five to seven years to get that built, to, you know, to somebody else's point that, you know, it's not a quick process, so we have to fix this now, and we have to work with the building that we have now, and then eventually, hopefully, get a new building, and the town would have to go through that process. But I know that the Board of Selectmen and the school committee have been supportive of that grant and that process for the last few years. And, and I did mention that IEP services that are missed will be compensated for, because that was another one of the questions.
Okay, thank you, thanks. And I just wanted to say thank you again to the teachers, really, truly appreciate you guys.
Erin, when you did the test, what was the air quality index on the place? The air quality index?
Can you repeat that question, please?
When you did your test, you have, you get an air quality index. What was the results of the air quality index? What was the number? When you run any test with air, mold, or anything, you have an index number.
Oh, on the mold test?
Yeah, what was your index number?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to review the report.
You don't think that was important to bring here, when, right here?
I have a copy of the report right here, if you give me a couple minutes, I can look through.
Okay, so, can you read it and tell me what it was, then? I'll wait.
So, in the interest of time, could we take another question?
Yep, yep, good idea, good idea. Okay.
Hi, my name is Lorraine Holland, I have a child in kindergarten, a Ms. Krasinski's class. George, how long have you been a consultant here at Green Meadow?
I believe, about six years.
Six years.
George, pull your mic a little closer, so people in the back.
So, in a previous life, I used to be an asbestos analyst, I analyzed thousands of materials, and so we're talking about all these wipes that we're doing in the classrooms, and I've been looking for the original asbestos survey that will tell us whether or not those ceiling acoustical tiles actually contain 30% asbestos, or whether or not they contain 3% asbestos. Same thing with pipe materials, anything, and in the AHRER reports, it says it's either previously been tested positive, I want to know what those results are, or it's presumed positive, I get there's certain materials that are presumed to contain asbestos. So, my question is, where is the original report that went through, the original survey that determines the percentage of asbestos in the material? So, just because a swipe today is less than 1%, which is still concerning, tomorrow or another day, should there be an event, it could be higher than that. So, if we do not have that, then what is, is there an intention to go and do a complete asbestos survey of not only of the old wing, but the whole entire school, so that we know what we're dealing with going forward? I'm just not happy with previously tested positive and the swipes.
So, to answer your question, the data, we obviously didn't do the original AHRER report back in 1989, so when we were giving the contract here for the town, we take the oldest or the data that is given to us from the town, and that's how we compile the previous data that was taken. Then we also give the option of taking additional samples, and we put a cost value to it, and again, it's budgetary driven by the town or the school department, whether or not they have the appropriation of money, of funds, to do additional testing. So, what is not tested, we do go on, assume it's positive. We, you know, if we do those additional tests, we would be able to give you a clear chain of custody from a laboratory that shows 5%, 2%, 3%, 30%, but unfortunately, we, we can only go by the past data that the town has.
Okay. So, when you go over to the school this evening, and you look up at the ceiling, you're going to be able to say, this looks safe? I mean, I get you're going on the condition of the, of the ceiling tile, and what the integrity is, it sounds like it's not good. All right, moving forward, can, will the school department or the school committee commit to doing an asbestos survey in that school, so we know the percentage of asbestos and where it's located, and we, we know what we're dealing with?
I can say that tonight is the first time I've ever heard about an asbestos survey. So, I, I will commit to it going forward, because this is new information for me, and I'm writing it down right in front, and we'll follow up on that.
Okay, and I just have one more quick thing, it was, so, earlier, it was requested that we have an additional meeting to work on a plan. Can we agree that there will be a motion this evening for a date soon, so that we just don't leave here, so we know when the next date will be for a meeting?
Sure, I'm comfortable making a motion, but we would have to poll the members of the board and everybody in attendance to try to figure out a mutually agreeable time.
Yeah, because I don't want to wait a month, so.
I don't, I wouldn't want to wait a month either.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm sorry to be back up again and preventing other people from getting their questions in, but there are a couple of important things. One being, we've been telling the school committee, and we've been telling the administration how sick our teachers are for a long time, and I think that has been neglected tonight. We've been talking about our children, yes, but we have teachers that have been sick since the beginning of the year, since last year, since the year before that, not always as severe, but it's getting more severe day to day, and I want to be sure that everybody knows that. I've been given permission to tell you that they are sick. That hasn't gotten out. Beyond that, we met and we talked about doing the dust testing. We did not specifically, as the MEA, talk about exactly what kind of testing that was going to be. We asked if we could have an MEA representative there at the time, and that wasn't able to be worked out because of the timing that the testing was done. You did swipe tests, which we know picks up the dust, but those swipe tests test in one specific spot, five feet away, could be another specific spot that would test entirely different from where you tested that one spot. We asked that you test, and if anything came up positive, they would be cleaning before we moved. We've been asked to be ready to move or pack our stuff, so it can be moved over the weekend. Are the teachers safe to go into the kindergarten classrooms and the preschool classrooms? Their rooms are safe for them to pack up, so that they can be moved and they can have some teaching materials?
So, we shared, so we did sample every room in that hallway, right? One room came back as being positive for less than 1%.
Yes, one room that is connected to another room was only closed off this one year.
Absolutely, so.
One spot in one room.
So, I shared those results with the Department of Labor Standards, who provided us with recommendations on what we need to do for cleaning practices, before we allow anybody to re-enter any of the rooms that tested as positive for less than 1%. So, two of the rooms are being cleaned as we speak, like I said earlier.
Two rooms?
The other two, not in that wing, the gymnasium and 3B are being cleaned as we speak, because I got the report back this morn, if you can give me a second to explain, I got the results back this morning, we've been working with our, our consultants, we pulled together a plan, we were able to get our licensed asbestos abatement contractor to come out here. After I called him at 3:00 this afternoon, once we got the confirmation back from the Department of Labor Standards that that was an acceptable plan on their part, they came out here. So, they only have time with the limited crew that they were able to scramble up, and the two hours that I told them I needed, I'm here at the site to get these rooms cleaned for tomorrow, to prevent further disruption to that school. So, we were able to do two rooms tonight, and we're, tomorrow, we're going to be discussing a further action plan for moving forward, and how we can get the rest of the rooms cleaned, and get that hallway open, so that people can get their supplies and equipment and materials out of there as soon as possible.
I'm respectfully requesting a little bit more, that's a 15-minute, a 15-second time that I have left, and most of my time was taken from that answer, and I have some more important things that need to be said.
Well, you can, you know, one more question or sentence, but the other people waiting, we just have a few minutes left.
I will forfeit for you to be able to get your questions.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We, we left it to you to figure out what kind of testing. You got a note back from Amar, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, it is in the email chains that went out. Thank you. That said, the swipe samples are not a recognition method by the EPA to indicate if there is asbestos or not. EPA requires there is no visible emission, which means that if the inspector or monitor performs an inspection, and he sees no debris, then the next step is to perform air sampling. There was no air sampling done, to my knowledge, I have not heard that there was any air sampling done. So, even though we have those swipe tests, where we have three positive, but less than 1%, we have no air sampling. So, I don't believe you can equivocally say there is no danger of cross-contamination. One of those rooms that tested positive is a room where a teacher went from the kindergarten wing up to that other classroom, and all of the furniture wing up to that other classroom and all of the furniture went up, not necessarily cleaned, just dragged through the building and might have been wiped down, but now that room tests positive at less than 1%. The room that you're talking about cleaning is one of our preschool rooms, which is wonderful, but it's not the rooms where the teachers are most sick. So you're not going to clean those rooms and you're going to let the teachers go back into those rooms to pack up their materials so that they can have teaching materials and then custodians will clean the hard furniture so that it can be moved? What is the plan? We've been told to consider that we should be ready to pack up during our half-day professional development tomorrow. I don't feel that's safe for our teachers. And I apologize that I'm only getting to you this information now, but I'm looking through all this information and only just getting to digest it. And you're asking our teachers to go into the rooms without them being completely cleaned. And before you address that, I want to make sure that there wasn't another comment down here.
Well, while you're thinking, your question most broadly is, is it safe for the teachers to go back in to pack up their stuff, right? That's what your question is.
Yes, our sick teachers, excuse me, our sick teachers to go back into their rooms to pack up their teaching materials so that they can teach their students.
So my understanding is that after we got the test and after Erin had talked to the Department of Labor and Standards, that they recommended that, and we had talked about the contingency when we met with the MEA, of bringing in a professional cleaning company. They in fact are coming in for the two rooms that are in the new wing that tested high, one being the gymnasium, the other one being 3B, which is not the room that was moved from the old wing.
3B is the room that was moved from kindergarten.
Is it?
Wow.
Okay.
No, one was, one was a hole.
So anyway, it's being cleaned right now.
Yes, 3B, the gymnasium and 7J are being cleaned right now.
Correction, 7J is not being cleaned right now. 3B, 3B is being cleaned right now and the gymnasium are being cleaned back right now because those are the rooms that are currently occupied and currently planned for activities tomorrow.
Okay, so nothing in the K wing is being cleaned but the K?
This evening, right. And I, like I said earlier, we're working closely with the Department of Labor Standards who's giving us guidance on what we need to do and what the appropriate steps and actions we need to take.
Yes, they're giving you the bare minimum that you need to do and I appreciate that, but can you look your teachers in the eye and say that their rooms are clean enough for them to pack their materials?
We're not asking them to tomorrow.
That's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying at all. So my recommendation to Dr. Girardi, based upon the information I got at the DLS, is that we need to clean those rooms before we allow any occupants back into that hallway. I don't have time to mobilize a crew in 12 hours to get somebody there to clean an entire hallway and all those classrooms overnight to allow people to be, to give Dr. Girardi the advice that it's open, we're able to be open tomorrow. We have to work with the consultants to develop a plan, pull a permit from the state, from the DEP, and get the authorization, the okay to go back in there and to perform the cleaning so that we can say that it's good to go, so.
Thank you, Erin. I appreciate that. Dr. Girardi, you sent me the email that said that we should plan to be packing so that they can be moved over the weekend.
We talked about that at our meeting.
What meeting? I wasn't, you sent me the email today.
And earlier today, it was before the Department of Labor and Standards talked to Erin, the hope was that because those rooms didn't test positive, that people could go back into them.
Just a quick answer, please.
So I wasn't able to locate the answer you're looking for in the report. I need some more time to look that up, I can get back to you.
All right, yeah, I'll write, I'll email you.
If you could email me, that'd be great, appreciate that.
So go ahead, because you exceeded your time, right? Am I accurate in understanding that? You gave your time to her?
I guess there's time if you have it.
Okay, go ahead.
Very quickly, I'm not going to repeat anything that was said tonight. My name is Josh Morse. I have twin girls in the pre-K program at Green Meadow. A little bit about myself, I've worked for almost 15 years in the facilities world. I am the building commissioner for the city of Newton. I'm responsible for 88 buildings, 25 schools, and over 3 million square feet. I've completed over a billion dollars worth of capital projects and over $100 million worth of hazardous material remediation. I'm not here to talk about what has been done. I'm here simply to offer whatever help I can bring to the table to help move this forward, both in the short term and in the long-term project.
So would it, oh, be careful, I let him, because you spoke briefly, go ahead, go ahead.
It's surgery.
Okay. Two quick questions. I know that you probably have, you know, a whole business, but why have you only been involved in the last 24 hours? I mean, if the answer is that you have, you had other clients, then that's fine, but why have you been only involved in the last 24 hours?
So I will tell you, first of all, I'm the director of operations for the company. I'm involved with several projects that Universal does from building, school demolitions to all types of remediations. This, I'm covering for the owner today due to an illness and this was brought to me 24 hours ago, so I've been trying to do some diligent reading of the reports and helping Erin and coming down here and trying to assess what's going on. I'm sure that the office has been contacted by the town.
Okay, great. I was horrified to think that the consultants were only involved for the last 24 hours. Thank you for that clarification. Who decided what areas were tested and where is the list of the areas that were tested and where is the list of the results?
So we can provide the list of the results?
Thank you.
Well, I can't, well, I can't speak for the school department, but I'm sure.
Well, as far as who, which rooms were decided, we did that in a meeting with the MEA. We went through and we talked about testing all of that wing and then specific rooms where there were concerns, they asked specifically, these rooms should be tested. And then Erin added a few more areas like the cafeteria, the gymnasium, those sort of areas.
So all of the areas that were concerned were tested and then there was more additional?
It was discussed at a meeting with the MEA.
Okay. We need that report posted immediately. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Michael Ford. I have three questions. The first one, it seems most of the night we've been talking about ceiling tiles and it seems that the building is only half the problem. As someone earlier in line alluded, the people, the people issues or people problems or health issues are the other half of the problem. So with regard to the illnesses students are having and the illnesses that teachers are having, what's being, or is there a plan to understand, assess, and address those issues?
So the air purifiers was one of the things that the MEA recommended to help address.
I don't mean going forward, I mean to understand what's going on right now. What health issues are they having? Does anybody actually on this, you know, here or within the school system actually understand what are the commonalities of the teachers, of the 50 to 60 teachers sitting behind me here? They're not all from the kindergarten and preschool wing. They're spread throughout and if half of them have had health issues, as they did when they raised their hands, that's throughout the building. That's not just one part of the building. So I think there's a lot of data that can be gathered there that would be helpful to the school, but also to help them as well.
Yeah, we have received some doctor's notes, but we also received the surveys that said that a significant number of staff have health concerns. So we did receive that data and we'll move forward.
The second question is, what I'm hearing, my perception of what I've been hearing tonight, is that there is no reason to think that there is a health hazard at the school. It seems from the data that's been assessed so far, very minimal. If we compare that with the experts sitting behind me on the air quality of the school, the people who have the most intimate knowledge of the air quality, does that change your understanding of how safe the school is?
I'm sorry.
Or does that change your concern about how safe the school is?
Does the experts, like the teachers' perceptions of the air quality of the school cause you pause when you compare against the data that we've been given?
Everything causes me pause. I've been very worried about this all along and I've been looking at all the data and working with everybody's input. So I've been worried significantly about this for a long time.
So I guess to clarify that, it sounds like what we've been hearing is it's very minimal risk, but the teachers are saying they don't feel it's safe. Do you still believe it's very minimal risk?
That's what I'm hearing from the experts that we've hired, yes.
What about these experts?
I've just heard them say that they don't.
And my third question is, obviously there's a problem, that's why we're here. There's things being done to address that. The first part, the first part of that question is, what are the success criteria? How do you know when you're done?
What is success?
No, not what is success.
Success criteria.
What are the measurement criteria to tell when this project is finished?
In the meetings we've had with the MEA's consultant, who they brought in, again, he talked about implementing things like the air purifiers and then doing post-remediation testing. So that would be the criteria, the post-remediation.
So that sounds like steps, but they don't sound like criteria as far as we want to reach a certain standard or things like that. So I would encourage criteria.
So to that point, earlier I said there is no air quality standard for mold, but there is post-remediation for the asbestos, there's post-remediation for the mold to see if you've improved it, but it's all relative, there's not a standard.
So there's no standard set by other authorities, but I would think as a school system, a school system must set its own standard for what is safe. So otherwise, it's just spending money forever and ever and not knowing what's done.
So the answer is the DPH has told us that there are no standards, all you can do is improve it. And so there are no metrics to measure and say, we've reached that criteria, but there is the relative measure of have things improved. That's what we're told by DPH, they're the highest advisory to governmental buildings.
All right. So I think.
I have a second part to that question if I can ask, which is.
Got to be quick because we're over time now.
The second part is, what are the failure criteria, which is, when you have to go look at the school and say, are there problems? At what, what are the criteria you're looking at to say, is the school not safe?
So we look to our consultants. If they, they're going to do an inspection, if they say it's not safe, I will be closing down the building at least for tomorrow. And then the question is, how much longer do we close down the building and do we consider the other options?
Thank you.
All right, I think we have our, the most patient baby in town to make our last, our last comment.
So I do, I do want to call attention to the fact that 35 minutes ago, we agreed on a hard deadline of 10 o'clock, closing this thing down. Oh, sure, so that's why I'm posing the question. That's all I was asking.
It's as important for me to be here, to have my five-month-old here, so I can be here.
I have no, I have no problem with it, I just wanted to.
My name's Carrie Nakervis and I'm here to just say that the lack of communication to all these parents and I'm sure teachers, because I can't speak for you, what you get for communication, but it's horrible. There is no communication. I have a fourth grader at Fowler, I have a first grader and a future kindergartner come five years from now. And I just want to say, I have a few things. My fourth grader, she had major, you know, had, was put on an asthma plan in kindergarten and as each year she went through Green Meadow, we went, got better and better and better. This year, we would have been on that inhaler and we haven't been on that inhaler. That says something. But the communication, I'm getting more information from my first grader than I am getting from anybody in the administration. She's telling me about the specials where they are, that she's not going to have gym, that she's going to have gym in the wellness room. The wellness room is not going to be a gym, I'm sorry. That cannot be held, be running around and get the kids' energy out. It's mandated by the state for children to have physical education. So that is against the law if they don't have it. Why don't, you know, you want to put the preschoolers in the gym? That's just not feasible. So maybe offices should go into the gym and the preschoolers should go into your offices so that they can actually get their education and the children get their services. Because again, I think I've spoken before that I am a teacher, so I do know the laws where, you know, some parents might not know all of the laws that are supposed to be upheld and there are a lot, a lot of laws being broken right now.
Hi, I'm Danielle Pimenta. I just have a quick question because I know you're going to go over and then we'll know whether the building will stay open tomorrow or not. Can you walk us through, like, what are you going to do? How are you going to determine what is safe and what is not safe? Can you run tests tonight and get results in time for, to make that determination?
No, so the major thing I'm going to look for is visible emissions to make sure that there is no debris that could be pulverized or is pulverized, that is falling. I'll look, check the area, I'll check above with a flashlight to see, someone was talking about some TSI pipe insulation material, see if there's anything friable. And if there is, I'll assess it at that time and make a determination to them what should be done.
So it's like a visual inspection, but we won't know anything for sure.
Just so you fully understand, a visual inspection before a clearance is the most important by DEP and EPA regulation. So yes, I'm going to, I'm going to do a thorough visual inspection. We'll see what we have in that area. And again, I'll, I'll do my best to see through the crack, to see what's up above that. And if I, if I feel that there are no visible emissions, then at that time I will deem it safe at that time.
Thank you. Just a suggestion, Dr. Girardi, if you could describe the inspection when you, and how the determination was made when you contact parents, because many of them are not here because it's so late. So I think they would appreciate that.
Say that again, what would you like?
If you can describe what the inspection was and how the determination was made and why, when you communicate with parents whether or not the building is going to be open tomorrow, I think it would be important for them and for the teachers to know what happened when they weren't there.
Okay, thank you. Back to you, Justin.
I would probably suggest, Danielle, in response to that, that I would probably do a typical cancellation just because, and it would probably, I don't know if the pulse of the room is, do I do the cancellation this late at night and have all the calls go out or do I wait until 6 o'clock in the morning like I usually do? And then do a separate email with the determination. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, I think emails, as a parent said earlier, should be sent out explaining that decision and how the inspection was made.
But the cancellation, I guess the question is, do I do a cancellation at 11 o'clock at night with my usual method where the, everybody will get woken up?
Tonight, it seems like tonight.
All right, very good, thank you.
All right, so in the interest of getting our experts over to evaluate the building, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. So I will entertain a motion to schedule another meeting as soon as humanly possible based on availability.
Can you do that until we have more information?
I would, I would just prefer to wait till we actually have information. So we can schedule it and we'll put it out on the live feed.
So we're agreeing to schedule a new meeting and we will figure out as soon as we can do that. So now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.